It went off.
I'm listening, I'm listening.
It went off. It went off.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Garner Regular Town Council Meeting on February 4th, 2025. We have a lot of exciting stuff tonight, some great presentations of some wonderful citizens who have made great contributions, and we have some good news. But we'll get to more of that in just a few moments. If we could call the meeting to order officially and ask our town clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Gupton?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Thank you. As you know, we often start out with the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Our Mayor Pro Tim Elmo Vance is in charge of that for this evening. Would you like to delegate some of that responsibility?
Yes, this evening. For the invocation, we will have Chaplain Lee Smith, who's with the Police Department, to give the invocation. I will do the pledge.
Okay.
Let's all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow with me as we pray together? Almighty God, we indeed thank you for today. Father, we thank you for the blessings that you have brought upon our nation, upon our state of North Carolina, and here upon the town of Garner, which we call home. Father, we thank you for all that you have given to each one of us. And this evening, as we celebrate as a town, as we meet together, Father, we ask that your wisdom be present in this place. Father, that we would continue to do the business of your people in your community. Father, we indeed think of those that are not with us this evening. Father, we continue to ask that you would move mightily among your community, that you would continue to bless and grow this great community, this great state, and this great nation. For it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you very much. A good start to the evening. Let me tell you what a good start we got to this week and to this season. This past Sunday, it was Groundhog Day, and our old friend Snurd, who he and his family have been doing this for Garner for 18 times. This was the 18th time that Snurd was here. It'd been his father Mortimer in the past, but Snurd took the duty this time, and he has had a 100% accuracy of all of his prophecies over the last 18 years. And his good word this Sunday was, "Spring is coming soon," so you can rest assured. It's only one. They got a big round of applause the other day. Just a little bit of the good news we have tonight. And I'm real glad that we can start out here at a few moments with some presentations. We also have petitions and comments this evening, and our town attorney tells me that we have at least one person signed up to speak.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Rex Whaley.
Okay. Yeah, join us at the podium, and while you're coming up, I will read the mandatory disclaimer that we always read during these petitions and comments. We remind you that this portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included in this agenda regarding matters germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group persons must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but will not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petition to comment segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agenda. And Mr. Whaley, we're glad to have you. If you would introduce yourself with your full name and address, sir.
Rex Whaley, 102 Pine Way Street. And I know the order of the agenda, but I do have a few comments. I might run a little more than three minutes. I would really rather defer and let you do your proclamations and your awards before I...
Well, I've been told to stick to the written agenda. So we're gonna punch you right on in here at petitions and comments, then we'll come back to some other matters. And we would ask you to limit it to the three minutes. We have a lot of people who want to speak and a lot of ground to cover this evening.
I understand. But the topic I have, I think, is a fairly important topic for the town, and that's why, like I said, I don't mind deferring, so you could do those things. But I'll go ahead. I wanted to mention and ask some questions about the cost of services study. I know we've taken a couple of swings of that. There was a report back in, I think, August of '23, and then a draft in June, and I'm understanding now there's a final report. And I wanted to mention that I tried, as a resident, just to review the original report and provided some comments to some of the council about some issues I saw in that report, and like county taxes being included and us looking back. And so a draft report came out in June, and I then took a look at that. I was glad to see we moved forward by looking at the budget and had taken the county taxes out. But I noticed in trying to look at some of the numbers, it seemed that there was about $8 million worth of expenses that weren't included in that report. There were some park expenses. There were some public works expenses. There were some capital, general fund funded capital. Anyway, a whole list, about $8 million. I came to the meeting that night, didn't get a chance to speak, but did after the meeting, catch the consultant, and talked to him and pointed out those things, and was asked to document them and send them in via an email, which I did. And I was glad to see in this final report that those changes were made, that apparently he agreed, the consultant agreed with what I'd done. So I looked at this final report and still have a lot of issues. So I guess I got two questions, and I'm trying to make this quick, and we'd be glad to talk with anyone in more detail, council or town. First is, what are we going to do with the report? It's final. And the reason I say it's critical, it talks about where we need to head with development. Where are we having projects that don't generate enough revenue to support the cost? And what do we do? So my question is, what's the next step now that we have a final report, and how will we use it? And the second issue I have is, I'm still not comfortable with the report, the way I see it, because has anyone in the town taken those numbers the way they did it per unit and put it out to the broad scale of, well, if we apply those numbers to all the residential units, all the commercial property, what's the outcome? Because when I do that, it looks like we're making, not making money, but there's sufficient revenues being generated by single-family homes to support their costs. Departments, as we always suspect, that we're losing money. But if I've done the calculations right, and if the town has done these calculations and have a different set of numbers, I would like to know. It looks like even commercial property is losing money, which I find very shocking and surprising, because we've always said that commercial is contributing to the town. So that's why I say this is important, because it really plays into where we're headed in the future. And so those are my two questions. What are we going to do with the report? And if the town has done these outward calculations, when you look at the report as a whole, not just individual units, you know, to be sure we're not losing money on commercial property. By my calculation, it was like $7 million, and I just don't see that happen.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Whaley. And while we don't usually answer all the questions or make any decisions at this point, I do want to thank you especially for your close attention and dedication to this particular topic. It is complicated. It is critical to our town. What does it cost to provide service to a detached family home, a multifamily, a business, and how do their property taxes account for that or not? Where do they fall short? Very critical stuff. We're not going to get into it at this particular meeting, but I believe it is on our agenda for a future work session, as well as it may be mentioned during our retreat coming up later this month. So I'm eager to get your input. Anytime, call me, text me, we'll get together. Thank you for your input tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And that was the only one we had signed up? Is that right, Ms. Jones?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's move along to adoption of the agenda, and that is the agenda in general, which is numerous pages. I hope all of our council members have had a chance to look that over. Is there a motion to accept and adopt this agenda?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Singleton. That calls for a voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay, hearing none, that passes unanimously. And now we'll move along to a couple of presentations. One of my favorite parts, we have some great ones here tonight with some great folks to be recognized. The first one we're going to talk about is Garner's Outstanding American Legion Baseball Program. And this is one of our citizens who was recently selected to be inducted into the North Carolina American Legion Baseball Hall of Fame. And that is our friend, Coach Chris Cook. We're going to get together over here. If you can walk that far on his bad worn-out coach knees, and I'll read the proclamation, and maybe we'll get another comment or two over there. You can lean right on here, whatever you want to do. And I'm gonna start out by, I'm gonna read this proclamation, because it tells you a little something about what Chris has done and how important this is. It says, "Whereas Mr. Chris Cook has served for 16 years as manager of Garner's Senior Division American Legion Baseball Team, and during that time, Mr. Cook's program has amassed an impressive record with 361 victories and 134 losses. And under Mr. Cook's leadership, this American Legion Baseball Program has established a state record of 11 consecutive state tournament appearances, and Mr. Cook's teams have been seven-time area champions and four-time area runners-up. And Mr. Cook's teams were state champions in '21 and '23. And Mr. Cook's teams also were Mid-Atlantic Regional Runner-Up in '21 and Southeast Regional Runner-Up in '23. And whereas Mr. Cook, in recognition of his accomplishments, was recently voted into the North Carolina American Legion Baseball Hall of Fame and will be officially inducted just July. Now, therefore, I, Buddy Gupton, Mayor of the Town of Garner, do hereby proclaim February 4th, 2025, as a day of recognition of Mr. Cook as an example of Garner excellence and as a soon-to-be member of the North Carolina American Legion Baseball Hall of Fame. Thank you, Mr. Cook, for everything you've done. And I'm gonna ask you to make a few comments, but this is the epitome of what Garner's all about. It's somebody who sees a need. He doesn't wait on somebody to pay his way. He just jumps in there and gets it done, and this is a role model we all want to follow. It's all yours, sir.
Wow. There's a couple people that would definitely be proud right now. When I left Garner in '96, I was all right baseball player. I got to UNC Greensboro, and Mike Gasky, you know, I'm thinking, I'm gonna be an All-American. And he looked me in the eye, and he says, "When you leave here, I mean, I'm gonna leave there a Major League Baseball player." And he says, "No, when you leave here, you're gonna be a productive citizen when you go back home." And an 18-year-old kid didn't understand that. You're wrong. I'm gonna be a Major League Baseball player. And I think he'd be very proud of this right now, because to me, to you guys, the highest honor that I think just about anyone can have is to be recognized by the town they've lived in for 46 years. The other person that's looking down is Ross Whitfield. He was the first Parks and Rec Director of Garner. He hired me. I was the second option. You know, he told the high school coach, if he wanted it, he could have it. If he didn't want it, then it was mine. I got it. But like Mr. Gupton said, I ran with it. You know, I was a middle school baseball coach, and here I am now. Thanks to everyone that came on my behalf. Thank you. It has definitely been, it's been a wild journey. Thanks to my parents, you know. I know my dad was inducted into the Softball Hall of Fame. You know, I used to joke with him that I was probably going to end up being the better one, but now there's two in my family. So I get inducted in July. You know, while I did go to Fuqua for a little while, I came back here when they said that you're probably gonna get into the Hall of Fame. And I said, "Well, if I'm going in the Hall of Fame, I'm going in from Garner. I'm not going in from Fuqua." So you can put that in the record. And so thanks to my post, they sponsored me. They signed off on me, and lo and behold, I'm, I guess, a few months away from being in the Hall of Fame. So I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
And as we are making our way very carefully over to the photo spot over here, we have a few of your friends and family who would like to join us up here. Chris, did you bring some of your attendees that might want to have a picture?
Come on, come on, family.
We're all fans.
Stand right over here. And in the meantime, we may be asking councilmembers if you have any additional comments or questions you'd like to make while we get organized. And Mr. Matthews always is a commentator.
I don't know what you meant by that, but if we can come up with one, I'm sure. But congratulations, well deserved, and we're proud of you and glad you came back to Garner to make all this happen. And appreciate the Legion sponsoring you there. And we're not sure what that big stick is for. The mayor was standing off at a distance. Just congratulations. Outstanding volunteerism.
Well, let's see you top that crowd. You talk about loyal fans, loyal supporters. And Chris, apparently you didn't do this all by yourself. You had a little help, right?
I had a lot of help.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, here's one that's close to my heart here, another presentation, another award that we have to do tonight, and it's to introduce the presentation of the 2025 MLK Dream in Action Awards. I had the honor of being the emcee recently at the celebration that had been put together by the MLK Celebration Committee. And as part of their work, they put together a couple of citizens who have served the community in ways that embody the life and teachings of Dr. King, and they've gone a long ways. We're going to do a little reenactment here today, if we may. I'm gonna call on my good friend Pastor Wolfgang, Reverend Dr. Wolfgang Hertzling, up to the podium. We'll give you a little more detail on the award itself and a little bit more about the recipients.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I am Pastor Wolfgang from Lord of Life Lutheran Church here in beautiful Garner, where all are welcome, no exceptions. That's what we always say at the beginning of each of our services. And I'm very honored to be here as part of the MLK Planning Committee for the town. This was our 14th year that we put on this event, and we'll have a couple members of the committee that are here that I'm gonna call up when it's time for the picture. And as part of that celebration for all those years, we've given out the Dream in Action Award. You know, of course, that Dr. King is most famous for his "I Have a Dream" speech given in 1963 in Washington, DC. I think this is an acknowledgement that the dream isn't gonna become real unless there is some action behind it. And so the idea of the award is to lift up residents of our community, citizens of this town who have exemplary experiences in doing just that, taking some action to help accomplish the dream of the beloved community that Dr. King is so famous for. And I'm very happy to say that the two recipients this year both have ties to my church, which is why I get to do the presenting. The first one is Mary Cook. She's a charter member of Lord of Life, which means that 47 years ago, she was one of the members that began that congregation. Other than that, I'm not gonna disclose her age, other than saying that she's been there for 47 years. And she's very well-known in Garner. She was a teacher for decades in the school system and did many other things. But most recently, she's been involved in a wonderful program called the Backpack Puddies Program. And that's actually a three-way partnership. The Rotary Club, the Midday Rotary Club here in Garner buys the food. The food is delivered to Lord of Life and stored there. And then the participants of Able to Serve, which is a day program for participants with various disabilities, they do the packing of the bags. And then members of the church and other volunteers take those bags to the schools and feed hungry kids that way. Last year, I recently read that they packed 6,600 some meals. So it's a fairly large program that's, you know, grown over the years. The second recipient is Carlton McDaniel, who is the founder and executive director of Able to Serve. So he also has that connection to that particular program, because it's his participants who do all the packing. I found this to be a most wonderful partnership of the church, the Rotary, the community, the Able to Serve Center. So it's just a wonderful way to get food to the kids when there isn't school meals and, you know, during the summer and on weekends and so on, so that people will be fed. So at this time, I'd like to call forward Carlton McDaniel from Able to Serve and Mary Ehrensberg of Cook to receive their awards. Now, at the award ceremony last month, they got a certificate. Now they get the real thing. Carlton, this is for you, and this is your award, Mary. And what I really like about it, can I have you back for just a sec? What I really like about that is, there is a quote on here from Dr. King that says, "An individual has not begun to live until they can rise above the narrow horizons of their particular individualistic concerns to the broader concern of all humanity." And I just think that quote so describes, so well describes Mary and Carlton's involvement, to always think about people beyond themselves and to be in service to their neighbor. So congratulations, and thank you. Thank you for your service, Mr. Mayor.
Before we go to the photo spot over here and have, I hope we don't have quite as many supporters.
No, we have a few.
We could barely fit them in the picture. We have a few will do that. But before we do, I'd like to call on council members who may have another comment or two. And we'll start at the opposite end this time with Mr. Vance and come this way.
Well, I would say that it's only befitting and appropriate that the individuals received the Dream in Action Award this year. Great work to you, to you both. And we are well aware of what you're doing within the community, and I ask that you continue to work to achieve Dr. King's dream, to make Garner a beloved community. Congratulations to you both.
Yeah, just like to say, the work you do every day demonstrates that everyone matters and everyone has value, despite how someone would like us to behave. So thank you so much for the work that you do.
Yes, I was a high school student when Dr. King was becoming well-known, and the privilege of listening to him speak was just amazing. And I appreciate everything that you do to carry on that tradition. But it's not just his, it's yours as well. Thank you.
Congratulations to you both. I remember Ms. Cook, when she was a teacher at Vandoor, or East Garner Vandoor, right?
That's one of many, yes.
I know, I know. I remember when you were there, and I went to school and graduated in 1980 with Carlton. So congratulations to you both for your many years of service.
Congratulations to both of you. And like Ms. Behringer, Dr. King's speech, I remember watching it on TV, my three channels of black and white TV. It was about that big with a set of rabbit ears. But seeing it live, it was quiet in a crowd. I remember it well. But again, congratulations. And as always, I do love my Able to Serve kids, because wherever I'm at, they show up and do a valuable job. Thank y'all for what you're doing. Pastor, I read your sign. Everybody's welcome, no exceptions. Probably five times a day driving down that road there. So it was memorable. Congratulations.
Take us up on it and come visit us. And if the people from the committee would come up that are here. And families too.
Big worship, train big with.
Um, Dr. Barry, could you turn it over here?
You don't have to stand up there.
Lucky you.
I give you a job.
Ready for? All right, ready?
Thank you. Well, those were two fabulous presentations. We have a third presentation that's not quite as exciting, but least as important. This has to do with financial matters, asset management. And our presenter is going to be Karen Magnus of PFM Asset Management. Mr. Beck, I think is going to do the official introduction.
Good evening to everyone. Yeah, that's a tough act to follow with those two presentations. But proud night for Garner and great to see those citizens honored. We're here tonight to do the annual information session with council related to the town's investment activities. For a number of years, the town has partnered with PFM Asset Management to serve as investment advisors for the town. So they manage a portfolio of funds for us. Those investments are governed by state statute as well as our own town policies. And PFM adheres to those policies with the investments that they make on our behalf. And this evening, we have Ms. Karen Magnus here to go through the most recent quarterly investment report with council. She and I review those, or a PFM representative reviews that with me on a quarterly basis. And so we have the most recent one, which is as of December 31st, to present tonight. So Karen, we'll go through that with you all and then we'll be glad to answer any questions at the end.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you, Mayor and Mayor Protem and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update today. And so we go to slide, just in the interest of time, maybe go to slide four. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about broadly current market themes and topics around inflation, some of what we're seeing with the new administration coming in. And then we're going to speak specifically about y'all's portfolio, the town's portfolio. So looking at the slide in front of us, the current market themes. The US, from our investment team, we see the US economy still being very strong and resilient, coming in for a soft landing, and that's in line with what the Fed Chair Powell is saying. The Fed is continuing to ease the cycle of rate cuts. And so if you recall, rates went up very high to combat inflation. And then they started to lower rates last year. They've taken a pause in December and then again this past January and are holding the Fed Fund's rate at four and a quarter to four and a half percent. And just as a reminder, that is the rate at which banks lend to each other. Very short, like the overnight rate, excuse me. We're going to look at what's called the Fed dot plot in a few slides. So I'll hold off on any comments there. And then Treasury yields have been more like volatile a little bit, and we'll look at that in a little bit. But really, the two years where it started last year and where it ended is the same, but sort of like the process to get there at the end was a little bit bumpy. And we'll go on to the next slide, please, David. Broadly speaking, the Fed, the Federal Reserve, has a dual mandate, and that is to manage prices or inflation and then also with respect to unemployment. So looking to achieve full employment in the country. And the Fed sees inflation as being broadly on track. And, excuse me for, I'm a little, this is my first time in front of the town council, so I just have to say out loud. I am a little bit nervous and I appreciate y'all's grace. Thank you very much.
No need to be nervous. There's not going to be a pop quiz, there's not even going to be a vote. We're here to get information. You're a respected authority.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So inflation, the Fed believed that inflation was coming in line with its targets. And then the rate at which inflation was lowering slowed down, which is why the Fed paused on the interest rate, lowering the interest rates. Unemployment, the Fed views and PFM Asset Management also view the employment in the country as a positive, I guess, as a positive. So companies are not necessarily laying off, but when people, when they do have attrition, those people are perhaps finding it a little bit harder to find jobs. But overall, the employment rate is in line with the expectations. If we go to the next slide, six, we're going to talk about some of what we're seeing with the new administration and the potential policy implications from the Fed. And so we're keeping an eye on what's going on with taxes, with tariffs, with immigration, and with regulation. 2025 still is demonstrating some uncertainty regarding how policy will be implemented and then how that will impact the economy. We are monitoring four aspects, again, taxes, tariffs, immigration, and regulation. And broadly, we know that those four items are going to impact growth and growth in the economy's ability to stay strong and rebound. Markets are continuing to react to news. Specifically, if you were, have been watching the news lately, then we know that tariffs have been causing a little bit of a whiplash. And so that's one of the things, again, that we're keeping our eye on. One of the things that PFM is not doing is sort of like reacting to every soundbite that comes in. And so an update from our investment team is that we expect the first 100 days to provide more insight and clarity in terms of what the administration's going to do with fiscal policy and then how the Fed may react with monetary policy. The chart over on the right side in the upper, in the upper quadrant, just shows the change in real consumption from August to October and then to November. So from that, it looked like people were maybe buying ahead in terms of some items. And maybe that is because people are anticipating tariffs. So we'll see how that pans out. We'll continue to keep an eye on that. And then on the lower is just a graph of companies, like S&amp;P 500 companies, doing a word search on tariffs and how many, like how many mentions there were. If we go to the next slide, we can take a look at some forecasts by economists. So the chart on the left is, I guess, an average of about 52 economists and where they believe inflation, where they're forecasting inflation to be. So that's the blue shading. And then through December, we can see where inflation actually was at 2.7%. So just a little higher than the Fed's kind of desired 2% rate. And then projecting where inflation may go into later in the year in 2025. On the right side is GDP forecast. So again, it's what was the actual in the second and third quarter of 2024, and then projections by various economists on where they think that the US GDP will be through the end of the year. The next page just shows, again, another, the Fed's updated summary of economic projections. And so the, and how they have changed from the end of September to the end of December. So we can see that on the change in real GDP is, a lot of the, a lot of them are either consistent with where they were, like over into 2026 and 2027. 2024 and 2025 was slightly increased to what the projection in December over September, excuse me. And the Fed Fund's rates, again, in 2024, those are kind of in line with the September projections. And then in 2025, slightly, slightly higher in December than they were in September. Well, turn to the next page, David, and look at the dot plot, the Fed's dot plot. And the dot plot is for the 19 people who are the Federal Reserve Committee, where they think in interest rates or the Fed Fund target rate will be over time. Initially in 2025, when we looked at this in September, it was projected to be four rate cuts. And, excuse me, in 2024, in September, they were projecting four rate cuts for 2025. That has since moved to two rate cuts. And you can see where the December projections are higher than the, I guess, September median. So all that to say, rates, it doesn't appear that the Fed is looking to lower the Fed Fund target rate as much as they had anticipated about midway last year. And that is because inflation is stickier than they anticipated it would be. And so they're taking, continue to take a wait-and-see, a wait-and-see approach. I'm going to skip slide 10 and just go on to slide 11 to take a look at the Treasury yield curve. Again, we can see where the yield curve prior to recent times had been what's called inverted. And so you would expect as you go further out on the year yield curve that you're going to earn more. If you invest in a 10-year bond or a 20-year bond, that your rate's going to be higher than if you invested in a two-year bond. And so the curve is starting to be positively upslope just based on what's going on in the economy today. I'm going to, just on slide 12, look at the factors that are being considered for the next six to 12 months. And I'm only going to touch on two of these. One is monetary policy. We have shifted our view to neutral from positive, just based on what's going on with fiscal policy and what we're seeing with the Fed and monetary policy. And then inflation was, again, moving from where it was a quarter ago, shifting to neutral because it's not, again, going down. Or it's hanging on a little bit, a little bit more than, it's a little bit, yeah, stickier than thought. So we're going to go into y'all's portfolio now. If you have any questions on the broad market themes and stuff, I'll look at, take a look at your portfolio. Okay. So again, the value of the portfolio is just over almost like $10.4 million. This is, as a reminder, the strategy is a zero-to-one-year strategy. So it's not a long-term strategy. It's on average, the holdings in the portfolio are going to turn over on a yearly basis. Yield at cost is 4.6%, which just means that when we bought the portfolio, when we purchased the portfolio or with securities at cost, it would have been 4.6. And then if you wanted to reinvest that same portfolio today, it would be 4.35. Very high credit quality, as you would expect, just based on statutes, North Carolina state statutes, and then also your investment policy. You can see down in the lower right, the portfolio distribution relative to the benchmark. So the benchmark shows 100% on one year, but this is an actively managed portfolio. And so we might have bought something a year ago that now has a month to maturity, but then we'll buy something longer to, and on average, it'll be about, about a year, about a year in duration. If we go to the next page, you can see that the bulk of your holdings are in US Treasury. So basically, a risk-free investment. And then the other portion of your portfolio is held in federal agencies. And that's been pretty consistent, like those two security types, for some time now, for most of the year. The sector analytics, this gives us a view into what you're allowed to hold and how much of that you hold. And so US Treasuries, again, the bulk of the portfolio, followed by federal agencies, and then your investment and the local government investment pool at the time just being 1.1 million. The certificate of compliance, everything that we trade in the portfolio runs through our compliance system. So we're doing compliance when a trade is initiated that same day and then on a daily basis. And then there is a, page 17, just a certificate of compliance. We've already hit on issue diversification, so I won't go there, but we'll go to portfolio performance on slide 19. Your portfolio for the three months ending December 31st was pretty much in line with the benchmark. And you can see that has beaten the benchmark over the one, three, and five-year, five-year periods. On slide 20, you just see like the interest earnings that have accrued over the life of the portfolio. So this is a portfolio that's designed to generate income. And so over the course of the year, that's exactly what it's done. So that, that graph should only slope up. You can see, I'll just point out, over the past year, the interest earned compared to three years ago. So again, in line with the increase in interest rates, your portfolio has generated more income for the town, you know, in line with the Fed Fund, excuse me, Fed Fund targets rates going up higher over the last several years and still remaining, remaining where they are. So that's, again, another opportunity for, for income growth in your portfolio for the town. The next few slides are just portfolio transactions, which we don't necessarily need to go into unless you all have questions. Well, I appreciate your time and attention. If there are no questions for me, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Beck, closing comments?
No, just thank you for your attention. And if you do ever have any questions, just feel free to reach out to me. I can pass any questions along to PFM and get answers for any questions you may have. But they're a great partner for us, do a great job managing those funds and make sure that we're investing in secure, sound investments and protecting the town's earnings and funds.
Yes, thank you. And council is not on track to make any decisions on this at this time. This was to receive information. But while you're here, let me ask council members if they have questions or comments. And I'll start with Mr. Matthews down here.
Good presentation, no comments.
Mr. Singleton?
Thank you for your presentation. And you're the teacher and we're the students. So that's, you come back again, just relax, and we're in the classroom, we're with the students.
Thank you. Mr. Behringer, comments, questions, and Mr. Delger?
Just a question on slide 16 later. We don't have to do it right now.
Okay.
I'll get with you later. I have a question on the sector allocation numbers.
You've got his number, right?
I got his number, yeah.
All right, okay. Mr. Vance, comments, questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Information is appreciated. Thank you.
Excellent, a lot of information. And again, we have your number. We will call you for clarification. Thank you very much. We appreciate your help on that. And that brings us to our consent agenda. And these are a number of items that have been looked at before by council and by staff. Most of them are pretty routine, and we've looked at these before. And if none of the council members see any reason to remove any of these items from the consent. from the consent agenda, uh, and if, if we don't, then we can get a motion uh, to accept the consent agenda. Let's get a motion in a second, then I'll ask again if there's any discussion. Is there a motion to uh, accept the consent agenda?
Salute.
Okay, move by Ms. Behringer, second by Mr. Vance. Thank you. Uh, so now, there is a time for discussion. If anybody wants to talk about any of these items, about whether they should get more scrutiny, more discussion, or let them write on the consent agenda. Hearing none, I'll call for a voice vote here to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. Hearing none, the consent agenda is accepted unanimously. Thank you very much for doing your homework and looking at that ahead of time. So now we'll move along to uh, tonight's public hearings. We have two, and again, it's always good to uh, read the preface here, to go on the record, make sure we're all on the same page. Tonight's public hearings are legislative hearings, which they do not require sworn testimony. However, person's interested in speaking must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by the applicant and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requests groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. And uh, that being said, let's jump right into the first one on the agenda, uh, which is a zoning text amendment regarding stormwater requirements, nitrogen control. Uh, our presenter is Leah Harrison, our town engineer. Uh, so if you could give us a little information here, I think the charge to the council on this item is whether to refer to Planning Commission for consistency review and recommendation, and we'll be interested to learn anything we can at, at this point. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I'm gonna pull up the proposed ordinance here. Um, so this is an item that we discussed briefly when I did the stormwater presentation at the beginning of December, if you recall. And what this is, is um, we have a stormwater program for nitrogen control that allows us to meet our obligations to the state and to the federal government. That entire program is included in our Unified Development Ordinance by reference, with certain pieces of it being directly in the UDO. Um, so what we are proposing to do is to take four measures from the nitrogen ordinance, uh, the nitrogen program document and put them directly into the Unified Development Ordinance, so it allows us to um, enforce those more easily. And those items are all things that we are currently doing. They are currently required by our program. They will just be duplicated directly into the language of the UDO. Um, those items are, at project closeout or certi- certificate of occupancy, all engineered stormwater controls and public storm drain infrastructure shall be submitted to the town of Garner for review and approval. Upon acceptance of these structures and controls by the town, the property owner shall be responsible to maintain and inspect stormwater control measures annually. Um, the second is a little bit longer, um, so I won't read all of it to you verbatim, but this says that for all stormwater control measures and operations and maintenance agreements, agreement must be submitted to the town, um, must be spot signed by the owner and by the town, and that document is recorded. So that obligates the owner to perpetual maintenance of a stormwater control measure to make sure that it's meeting the requirements that it needs to into the future. Um, the third item requires property owners to submit annual inspection and maintenance documentation to the town on any engineered stormwater control measure. So they will have a third, third-party inspector who is certified, inspect their SCM, determine if any maintenance activities are needed, or certify that it's working as it's supposed to work, and submit that documentation to the town. Um, the final measure is that for any stormwater control measure, a public access and maintenance agreement is required to be cor- be recorded with the Register of Deeds, which allows the town to access the stormwater control measure to inspect, maintain, repair as needed, but does not obligate the town to maintain that device. So those are the four items. Like I said, we're already um, requiring these to be done. We are just transferring them to the language of the UDO to allow us to enforce them more easily. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That's a lot of information. It's a highly technical issue, but stormwater control is the new addition to the infrastructure right up there with uh, highways, uh, water, sewer, cable. Stormwater control is part of the infrastructure, and this is just another piece that's important. We appreciate the engineer staff paying attention to this, keeping us all legal and environmentally sound. So that being said, I'll uh, ask the, the town council members if they have questions or comments related to your presentation.
Nothing.
Ms. Behringer, Dallinger?
Yes, uh, comment. Um, since we're already doing text amendment, and this is going to Planning Commission, uh, I think we need to really look at the importance of our stormwater regulations and runoff, particularly our proximity of Lake Benson. Uh, in referencing page one thirty-eight of our comprehensive plan, it explicitly says that town officials may consider requiring floodplain protection that exceeds the state minimum requirements protecting vulnerable areas from future stormwater events. And the importance of retention and regulation in the town, particularly around Lake Benson and Swift Creek, is, is essential. And I would like in the record and go to Planning Commission that we require a hundred-year flood retention in the Swift Creek watershed. This i- is a condition that has already been voluntarily adopted by several applicants that have had projects in the watershed, um, but not all, and I think that that's a mistake. I think that we are seeing an increased frequency and intensity to our rainfall events, which creates ground saturation and exacerbates um, the potential problems with runoff. Um, so I would just want to have that presented as part of a text amendment to the Planning Commission, um, so we can stay ahead of the problem as opposed to responding to it and being dependent on applicants to volunteer that to us when they see that it is, you know, a, a good thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, that's my only comment.
Questions, comments?
Um, no questions, I don't think. Um, we do, so the way we require the one hundred-year detention of the one hundred-year storm now is, it's written that it can be required by the town engineer um, at their discretion. Um, so that is one way that we can require it within that specific watershed. Uh, what we have done historically is we have identified areas within town that have downstream flooding concerns, and those are the areas where the detention of the one hundred-year storm is required. Um, within the Swift Creek watershed, typically our focus is on the water quality more than the, the flooding issues, and therefore it doesn't always come up in that, that watershed, but there is a, the requirement for a higher level of treatment of, of that water. But it's, I mean, certainly something we can look at and um, talk to Planning Commission about.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Vance, comments, questions?
No.
Okay, okay, uh, thank you. And while, while you're up there, uh, let me ask our town attorney if we have any individuals who have signed up to speak.
Um, Mr. Mayor, no individuals have signed up to speak on this public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, thank you very much, Ms. Harrison. We certainly appreciate your information. You can sit down now.
Thank you.
Uh, and we will close the public hearing. Uh, I will ask council members for a motion in a second regarding referring this text amendment to the Planning Commission. Uh, then, then if necessary, we can have some discussion. Uh, is there a motion to refer this text amendment to the Planning Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, move by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Singleton. Uh, is there any discussion, any comments we wanna make about this before we vote? Okay, I hear you none, then I'll call for a voice vote. Uh, all in favor of referring this to the Planning Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, uh, this passes unanimously. We will refer that on to the Planning Commission. Thank you very much, council, uh, and our presenter. We'll move along to item two on the public hearings. This is a conditional rezoning request, uh, CZ twenty-four dash zero zero seven at fifty-eight twenty-eight Fayetteville Road. Our presenter from our planning department, Mr. Thomas Walters Dorf.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you. Um, tonight I'll be presenting GZ two four zero zero seven. It is a tier-one rezoning uh, for fifty-eight twenty-eight Fayetteville Road. So our applicant is Flores Capital LLC. The owner is Adelfo Flores. Uh, this is a tier-one conditional rezoning request uh, to rezone point six acres from rural agricultural to light industrial conditional. The site is on four oh one south at the intersection with Fayetteville Road. We know four oh one as Fayetteville Road. This is at the corner of Fayetteville and Fayetteville. Um, as a reminder, this is tier-one. We do not have a site-specific master plan. For context, it is currently zoned rural agricultural. Um, it's primarily agricultural and low-density residential in nature. The site is vacant. Um, it is on the west side of four oh one, as I mentioned, right there at the corner of um, Fayetteville Road and four oh one, about halfway between Simkins Road and Georgia's Landing. It also falls within the uh, Commercial Highway Overlay District. That stretch of four oh one is kind of a mix of single-family residential and some low-intensity commercial and industrial uses. It does not fall within any of our designated activity centers. You'll see that Regional Employment Center, that red circle, is centered on the Buffalo landfill to the north. There's also that mixed-use activity center at the corner of Farm, Old Stage, and uh, four oh one south. Um, the applicant has six written conditions they're proposing. Number one is our permitted use table. For light industrial conditional, they have narrowed their conditions to five out of forty-one permitted uses. Uh, we have other offices, uses not listed, restaurant sit-down establishment, sales, retail, no outdoor operations, vehicle sales, rental service, repair, uh, flex space, other light industrial manufacturing, warehousing, and transportation uses not listed. All five of those are permitted by right. Um, number two, they're proposing that all frontages of the building will be covered with at least fifty percent materials consisting of brickstone decorative scored masonry units. Um, that's above what's required in the UDO. Uh, they're proposing a covered awning and decorative light fixture to be installed at the main accessible entrance to the building excluding the bay entrances. Um, they're not planning on a building larger than fifty feet in length, um, so they're not planning on using a roof break. Um, they are proposing additional screening on the north side of the property, which is adjacent to the residential properties on Weak Strive. Um, that'll be thirty feet wide and be a mix of evergreen plantings, earthen berms, solid fences, or a combination thereof to meet a minimum height of six feet. And number six is their condition um, in relation to stormwater and runoff. Um, if the applicant is within the twelve percent where they're not required to contain stormwater on-site, as a result of their meeting with the neighborhood meeting adjacent property owners, they're um, proposing pulling the water from the north side towards us, where the residential properties are located away from them, uh, towards the southern portion of Fayetteville Road and towards US one. So they're, they're trying to be a good neighbor to um, those properties. Again, this is a tier-one rezoning. We don't have a master plan or site-specific plan to kind of analyze, so some of the metrics were a little difficult to evaluate. We just had their written conditions to go off of. Um, there were eighty-four properties and occupants within the notification radius. Their neighborhood meeting was August twenty-second at the Garner Rec Center, and there were eight people in attendance. You'll find the full neighborhood meeting report um, as part of your uh, documents. For our growth framework consistency, um, we found eleven growth framework criteria that we could evaluate. Six were strongly consistent, one was modestly split, and we had two modest inconsistent and two strong inconsistent. Um, our strongly inconsistent ones were the zoning choice, which was uh, LI for neighborhood typology is gonna be inconsistent. Um, and the industrial or warehouse building type would be uh, strongly negative. But overall, the development intensity metrics were um, fairly consistent. For our land use community character, it was uh, largely mixed. There was some high ratings given for the low-intensity use of the um, development. It's small infill development. Um, there were lower ratings given for green street solutions, natural conservation, uh, and kind of how the corridor is connected to the public realm. Again, the full detail of consistency review is in your staff report. So we found despite the two strong non-supporting scores for growth framework, uh, we could likely make an overall finding of consistency with continued fine-tuning. Uh, we do value and appreciate your input tonight. You'll hear from the applicant as well. Um, there's marginal support for the land use community character consistency, but again, we think uh, with additional tweaking, we could find um, an overall finding of consistency. Uh, tonight, our steps will be to finish and can, uh, finish conducting and close our public hearing. Refer to Planning Commission for findings of plan consistency and recommendation to approve or deny, and then it would come back to you all for findings of reasonableness and the decision to approve or deny. Um, I'm here for any questions. Again, um, the applicant is also here. They do not have a formal presentation today. They are here to answer any questions that are not written into the conditions that you may have questions about. Um, and so we're here for you tonight.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Thomas, and, and thank you for being here. Would you mind introducing yourself, full name and address for the council?
Yes, uh, so my name, sorry, uh, my name is Esteban. Good evening. Uh, actually, my uncle is the owner of the property, and he's the one that wants to develop. I, I extend his apologies because he's not in here. He had a family matter to attend. Uh, but we've been, we're planning through all this process of rezoning his property. Uh, the, the basic idea he has is to build a storage warehouse unit so that he can put a lot of his equipments for his various restaurants in Garner and Raleigh areas, uh, so that he doesn't have to just get rid of them and buy new ones, so he can might maybe fix them or have something in-house so he can not be so worried about where he puts stuff. So, uh, that's our main idea for the project, and like I said, we've been through back and forth with planning. They've been very helpful with it and with all the uses and conditions of it. Uh, so if you guys have any questions related to it, be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. While we have the two of you there, Thomas, did you have something else?
I, I did just wanna note, um, the Flores family is doing this on their own. We've been working with them directly without a land use lawyer, so it, for you all, for us, it may be a little uh, unique and different, but they have um, been receptive to our uh, concerns and, and tweaks that we've asked them to make, um, and they're still open to any changes that, you know, we may see fit.
Okay, excellent. Yes, I'm, I'm all about do it yourself, but boy, this is tough stuff to do by yourself.
Yes, yes, it was, definitely.
We have a whole lot of folks come in with, with attorneys, land use planners, uh, civilians, et cetera, but we'll do our best to work through this. That being said, uh, I'll check with our council members, kind of make around here, see what questions we might have. Let's start with Mr. Vance this time.
Uh, no questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Dallinger?
Yes, I have voiced this concern on other tier ones. And then tier one, when we, when it came down the pipe, was designed for large sort of amorphous development projects that were kind of, we're not sure what it's gonna be, but this rezoning is broad enough that something good will come of this. This is this, another sort of single-site tier-one rezoning without a site plan, so we don't really know what's gonna go there. They can say, I want everyone to be clear. They could just rezone it and sit on it for four years. They're not showing us anything. Gives me concern because it is residential neighborhood down that street, and Weak Street, the street over, almost every one of those properties is owned by an LLC. And so what I'm seeing is a potential assemblage happening before our eyes, next to a church on the other side, on the north side. Um, but the single-site tier one, we should be very uncomfortable with not having a site plan to know what's gonna go in a location. Um, so I'm, out of the gate, I'm not voting for small, single-site tier ones anymore because we do not know what that's gonna be, which means, one, we don't know what the future use is it gonna be. Two, we don't know what the tax revenue generation of the property's gonna be. Gets rezoned and it sits vacant, it's not helping us. So- So, every time we do one of these Tier Ones on a small scale, I'm gonna throw up the red flag because I've got serious concerns about the future changes of that entire area in a patchwork way. So that's my comment, and the inconsistencies on the land use are very significant. There are only two that were strong, the rest were very weak. So that, I guess the response, what, why are we not getting a site plan, and why are they not bringing us a Tier Two and all that?
I think for the applicant here, if they had gone to Tier Two master plan, they would have had to hire engineers, you know, land use planners. It would have been a more extensive process. I would, you know, let them answer exactly why they chose this route versus that, but potentially for time and money.
But if they're gonna build a building, they're gonna have to spend all that money anyway, right? So, again, it's not costing them anymore, and there's a level of certainty that they should have from the town that will approve what they're gonna do, if they're gonna lay out that amount of money, but there's a lack of certainty that the town has as to what's going on in the property. So, I don't have a direct question, just significant concerns on these small Tier Ones.
May I comment?
I'll have a question.
Well, those are very astute comments, and let's kind of get one round of questions and observations, and then we'll come back with questions all around. We won't hear your side of it, for sure. Ms. Behringer, comments, questions? Mr. Singleton?
I share some same concerns. You state in the meeting with the neighbors, you're gonna have thirty-foot, excuse me, a thirty-by-forty-foot metal commercial building, twelve-hundred square feet for storage. That's what the purpose is, okay? That's what you state the purpose is, but as we know, if it gets rezoned, any of these other uses are permitted there. All right, thank you.
Mr. Matthew?
Nothing, it's time.
Well, I'll ask the question, and maybe you can answer that and put your head in mind, and then tell us again just exactly what it is you plan to do with it.
So, like I said, my uncle owns multiple restaurants and supermarkets around Gardner and Raleigh. I don't know if you've heard of the Tor or similar stories, but he plans to build that and make use of the land so he can store the equipments for the restaurants. So if it needs to get fixed, he can fix it, or if he needs to buy a new one, he'll just dispose of it safely and then replace it on the restaurants or the supermarkets, because it's kind of tough having already your supermarket or the restaurant enough with all the equipments to put something new and get something out back, and same for goods and all the storage that he wants to put on that site. And we didn't go with the Tier Two, just because we weren't sure how to manage this on ourselves. So when they presented the Tier One and Tier Two option, well, we just went with Tier One because, again, we don't know anything at all, and it was our safest option, to be honest. So, that's the reason we did the Tier One, and that's mainly the reason he wants to develop the land.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see if there's another round of questions or a follow-up question. Mr. Vance, Mr. Vance?
Well, in reference to what has been brought up and the conditions that are provided here, can the conditions be brought down to the point where they can only do just what they're saying on that particular piece of property?
We can continue to refine and narrow down their conditions. I'll say, when the applicant first came in, they had one permitted use that they were proposing. They had a lot more other written conditions that were kind of redundant in the UDO, and we told them written conditions need to be what is in above and beyond, and even still, there might be some things in this that are a little redundant in their conditions. They did want to add just a couple more of those uses as we narrowed the written conditions down, but they may be open to making additional reductions in use or other additional written conditions. But I don't know if they can write into their condition that they're gonna build a particular-sized building. I would leave that for others to answer.
I was speaking more specifically of the uses that we have here and narrowing those down so that it'd be more focused into what they're trying to achieve.
That's possible, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Delinger?
Yeah, and I guess that, in parallel with that, with the conditions that are there now, which of those would be considered sort of a minor modification, if it were approved? What sort of the threshold for a major and minor modification? A change of use would be a major modification if they were adding a use, but if they were just eliminating a single condition, would that be a minor modification, or would that be a major modification?
I'm gonna let Aaron step in on this one.
Good evening. So there's a threshold that, as you stated, if a use is added that's not, was not approved in that rezoning, that was certainly prompt a modification and to start the process over essentially rezoning the property. If there are enough changes with the conditions or requested change of those conditions that significantly impacts what was approved and deviates from that, and you're proposing brand-new, you know, let's say they commit it to a fifteen-hundred-square-foot building, but now they want to enlarge it to, you know, thirty-five-hundred. That significantly can change the way that site operates and is developed, and so there's a minor and major modifications. There's usually the intensity, if it's a reduction, typically it doesn't require a rezoning process again, but if it's increasing the intensity, it'll typically trigger that rezoning process again.
And the interpretation of that is on the planning director. So minor modifications don't, they're administrative, they don't come back to council, and majors do, right? So, I guess what I'm, where I'm going is, and kind of along with Mr. Vance and your kind of back and forth with the applicant, if you can narrow it down so short of submitting a site plan, that the uses are restricted enough to, we have a better idea of what we're getting with the rezoning.
Absolutely.
I think that would be more, be more comfortable for folks to know what's gonna go there once the rezoning's done.
Yes, yes, and we can work with the applicant and discuss further feedback and continue to modify based on your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are further comments, questions?
No, I just would like to support what Mr. Vance and Mr. Delinger have asked for, and that's some refinement with the conditions.
And further comments, follow-ups?
I concur with what they said.
Yes, this is just enough different that it makes us a little bit concerned. That Tier One rezoning process is typically for very large tracts with long development horizons, like five or six years. We're not sure who'll be there. Will this be high-rise, commercial, or medium-rise? Will it have some integrated housing or commercial kind of things? It's usually for the longer-term, more complex projects. The council is used to seeing on a project this size or even five times this size, here's what we're gonna do, here's our use for it, here's what the building looks like, here's where they park, here's the screening, here's our storage area in the back. We have an obligation to protect the neighbors and the neighborhood, and you are on one of the major entrances to our town. We want this to look good. Our worst fear would be something like, well, it's approved for vehicle sales and repair, and next thing we see is just a bunch of cars out there waiting to get worked on, semi-operational or maybe not, you know, or even, like I say, just storing the restaurant equipment. A lot of that stuff seems to get stored outside. How is that gonna look to our neighbors, our visitors coming in? These are the kind of questions that go through our mind when it's ambiguous or when it's not specific. So I think you're hearing some feedback here, as Mr. Thomas said, it might take a little more refinement, a little more detail of what you plan to do, working through the staff and bringing that back, maybe, and I don't want to put words in the mouth of a councilman, but would that be something we would like to see done before this goes to Planning Commission?
Probably for the ease of the Planning Commission, so that we're sending something baked to them, and we've kind of vetted, I think, I mean, I've looked at my other council members, what their thoughts are.
Okay, is there a motion related to this item?
To, are we saying to present it to the Planning Commission as it is now? I think to keep, we need a motion to keep the public hearing open, is that correct?
That would be correct. And I don't believe, I believe the other two people who signed up are with the applicant's team, Mr. Flores.
My father and my uncle Flores.
I guess a question to the applicant and staff is, how long do you think it would take to work on revising the conditions to bring it back as soon as possible, so we're not delaying them?
Yeah, given our new agenda kind of preparation process, continuing it to the next meeting would not be possible. So the earliest now would be March fourth.
And that would still be in time to get to the next Planning Commission meeting?
Planning Commission would be April, yeah.
Say, it would?
It would push back.
Okay, so this could be deferred to our next meeting and still not delay the process of getting to the Planning Commission?
How the previous timeline was working, we could have deferred it to your next meeting and then still made Planning Commission in March. But now that we would need to continue it to the council's first meeting in March, it would then not be able to go to Planning Commission until April.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I guess I make a motion that we hold this public hearing open until March, what was the date of the fourth?
So, yeah, if you could continue it to March four.
To March fourth.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to continue this public hearing until March fourth for further refinement, further details, so council can make their best decision about referring this on to the Planning Commission. There's a motion by Mr. Delinger, a second by Mr. Vance. Is there any other discussion from the council members? Okay, that being the case, I'll call for a voice vote on the motion that's on the floor to continue this public hearing until our next meeting, before referring it to the Planning Commission. There's a motion to defer it, made and seconded, all in favor of that motion to defer or to hold it open and continue it, please signify by voting aye. Any opposed by nay? It passes unanimously that we will keep this hearing open, let you continue to work with staff, and still come back to the next council meeting and then get on to the Planning Commission. So we applaud your do-it-yourself approach, but sometimes it takes longer when you do it yourself.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Work with these guys, get it worked out, and we'll see you again soon. That being said, we close the public hearing.
Sorry, you've kept the public hearing open.
Kept it open, thank you. We stopped talking about it tonight, but we'll be ready next time when they bring it back. That's right, thank you. And now, we move along to new and old business, and the first one that comes up is number one, this is a Tier Two Conditional Resoning Request. A little more of what we see is typical for this size project, a little more specific, a little more detail involved. And this is one that council had seen before with the public hearing. We had passed it on to the Planning Commission, and now it's back, I understand, and our Assistant Planning Director, Erin Joseph, is gonna give us a little overview here. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the public and council. I will present the CZMP twenty-three dash zero-six Pool Drive Commercial and Fuel Sales. The applicant, Rakish Kumar, has submitted on behalf of the property owner for a Tier Two Conditional Resoning to rezone one-point-eight-eight acres from neighborhood mixed-use and to commercial mixed-use and also neighborhood mixed-use conditional. The site is located at nine-hundred-and-nine-ten Pool Drive within the town's corporate limits. And I'll briefly, since I know it's been a few months since this case was before you all, so I'll try to refresh you but not provide an extensive overview of the case. So currently, the site is neighborhood mixed-use, and that neighborhood mixed-use zoning district is intended for low-intensity commercial enterprises that primarily serves goods to the adjacent residents and surrounding neighborhoods, and is typically found within the corporate limits where public water and sewer services are readily available. And currently, on the nine-hundred Pool Drive site, there is a convenience store with fuel sales known as Webbs, and the second parcel is vacant. This site does fall within the Neighborhood Activity Center along Avisborough Road, and Avisborough Road also connects the Mixed Use Activity Center towards the north at Forest Hills and another activity center towards the south at Timber Drive. Avisborough Road is an NCDOT-maintained road, and the last, most recent traffic count with NCDOT has the annual average daily trips as eight-thousand-five-hundred-ninety. The applicant is requesting commercial mixed-use conditional. They have narrowed the potential uses to fourteen out of the sixty possible uses, and then a neighborhood mixed-use conditional, and with that district, they've narrowed the potential uses to thirteen out of a possible thirty-seven. The primary difference between these two districts is that the CMX allows the fuel sales, whereas the neighborhood mixed-use does not. What you see highlighted in the brown color is the updated conditions based upon the feedback that the applicant heard during the public hearing as well as from the Planning Commission. So they have committed to not allowing a standalone tobacco CBD or vapor shop, and they further define that within that condition. However, tobacco sales shall be allowed to continue within the existing convenience store as well as within the expansion area, proposed expansion area of the convenience store. The applicant has also proffered a condition to limit the amount of window-mounted advertising of tobacco, CBD, and vapor products to a maximum of five percent of the total window area for that building. And the owner has also committed to installing an outdoor plaza with covered seating in between the new retail building and Pool Drive, and this outdoor plaza shall incorporate a public art element, which may be a sculpture, a building mural, fountains, decorative pavers, or artistic outdoor seating. And unless you want me to go through the previous conditions that they initially proffered, I'll just move right along. On the screen, you have the master plan that shows the layout of the proposal. You have, they are committing to four fuel pumps, a maximum of four fuel pumps, and so you'll see those highlighted on the screen here. This is the area that proposes the outdoor seating. This is the new retail center that consists five-thousand-square-feet of retail space. This is the existing convenience store, and this is the proposed building extension, which this told, this area of the existing and proposed expansion totals forty-five-hundred square feet. They also have committed to a crosswalk between Avisborough Road and Pool Drive in a fence that, at the boundaries, the southern and northern boundary of the site, west, excuse me, the western and northern boundary of the site for the adjacent property owners. They are preserving eighteen-thousand square feet of tree canopy and, as well as addition to- and as well as addition to new canopy, the minimum requirement is 9,835 square feet. They have provided parking spaces above the minimum requirements for convenience stores with fuel sales. They are providing 14 where the development ordinance requires nine and the sales in retail building is providing 23 parking spaces. And then there is a note that, you know, some uses may require more or less, but potential occupants would be subject to their zoning compliance permit and during that time, the parking counts will be tracked and determined. The site is within a watershed protection area, it is subject to water quality, nitrogen, and 85% total suspended solid treatment and other quantity requirements. They are providing one surface stormwater control measure and the City of Raleigh will provide water and sewer to the site from Pool Drive. They will have two points of access, there is a full access drive from Avisboro Road and then a one-way shared drive from Pool Drive. A TIA was not required for this, this development proposal. One of the topics of discussion during the Planning Commission as well as the public hearing was the remediation of the leaking underground storage tanks. The applicant at the Planning Commission meeting provided a presentation from their engineer regarding those stormwater, excuse me, those leaking underground storage tanks and the remediation and the process that must take place in order to address those those storm, excuse me, those leaking underground tanks. And so with the comprehensive plan, this site does fall within a Neighborhood Activity Center. It is located within the retail area character typology and it is a Level 3 area to enhance. So with those qualities of the comprehensive plan, we did rate this, the growth framework with a strong amount of consistency. There were nine strongly consistent and one strongly inconsistent. And the inconsistency stemmed from the lack of a identified pocket park, but however, they are creating and offering a small outdoor plaza. And as it was reviewed with the land use and community character consistency, there were 17 criteria that were determined to be applicable or possibly, possible to meaningfully address. Consistency is modest currently. There are minor changes and additional details that help to shift the consistency, the emphasis on the public realm, the use of open space for creating a stronger central focal point for the neighborhood and then proffering those additional conditions that speak more directly to the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. And so with the previous fine tuning of the conditions in response to the public hearing and comments from council and Planning Commission, staff does support an overall finding of consistency and you do have that consistency report in your agenda packet. I won't go through all of the questions and comments from the Planning Commission, but overall there were questions regarding the signage condition. There was questions regarding the vacant lot to the south of the site. Concern about the contaminated soils and the air quality from gas emissions was raised and addressed. Question if their rezoning should be tabled until the soils have been remediated. There was compliment given for thoroughness of the neighborhood meeting and the supporting documentations. And so the Planning Commission adopted a consistency statement and a motion was unanimous, oh, excuse me, it was on a four to one vote to recommend approval for this case. This evening, reasonableness of this request is considered and determined before you all go through the, based on the six criteria. And there is draft motions in your agenda packet, I believe page 99 of the agenda packet with draft motions for you to consider and to deliberate upon. And the applicant is here this evening, they have a presentation and I will also be on standby to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you very much, we're always eager, here's the applicant.
Thank you.
If you would come to the podium, address, address the council, give us your full name and address.
My name is Sam, I, good evening, appreciate your time. My address is 1111 Oberlin Road in Raleigh. I'm here representing the owner, ADA Properties. There it is. I hit this, will that go?
Oh, let me turn it on.
Okay, bear with us. All right, 900 Pool Drive is currently home to the Easy Way Convenience Store and Gas Station. Existing building was constructed in 1975, previously operated under the name K. Webbs. Both properties are currently NMX, neighborhood mixed-use. The 900 Pool Drive is five, is 0.54 acres, contains the 2,400 square foot building and the two existing fuel pumps that are not currently in operation. The tanks are leaking, we're going to talk about that shortly. 910 Pool Drive is vacant, it's got a City of Raleigh raw water line easement running like a 45-degree angle through it. There is nothing in that easement, there's no water line, it's just there for a future run out, I think to Lake Benson. The Easy Way Station is about one mile from the BP Station up at 70 and about one mile from the Lowe's Foods Fuel and Grocery Store. So it is, it is a mile each way, there's a, there's a pocket there that where it is convenient for people to go to this station as opposed to getting out to 70 or going further south to Timber Drive. Newer stations are often going for either six pumps or eight pumps. We're limiting it to four, I think two is not enough and six would be too much for this small area, so we're trying to shoot the gap. This property owner owns and operates a Shell Station that's off of this map but just to the west at 1305 US Highway 70 West. So this area, it's also convenient for the people that live right around that, especially the people on the west side of Avisboro Road to walk to and they have a lot of regular guests because of that. And there's also the park down, the, down the road, South Corner Park and kids' sports leagues, they run on snacks and Gatorade. I've been playing that game for, for years and having a convenience store and, and food close to the park in a nice, modern, updated store would be an improvement to the area. It would leave, you know, if we fix the place up, we have better lighting, better, it's going to be a better place for people to stop and get their snacks when they're running late to the game. So the owner wants to remove the two pumps, the canopy, and rebuild them just to the west, so we're asking to relocate that property line a little bit to the west. It also runs right down the drive aisle, that's the shared drive between those two. The existing convenience store is about 21, they're looking at expanding it by 2,100 square feet and the area there would allow them room for a food sales counter and a kitchen to offer food sales for quick serve meals, restaurant, they're not 100% sure the, whether it's going to be a pizza place or a sub place or a, you know, like a breakfast food place, but the, that's, that's their goal with expanding the existing building. So we are requesting CMX conditional for the property on the east and leaving it NMX on the west. This is basically just to allow the fuel, say, the fuel pumps to be expanded. We're severely limiting the uses in the CMX so that they're basically less than what NMX normal is and we're also limiting the uses in the NMX district that's currently by right. You could build anything from NMX, but we're just trying to reduce those uses that would be, you know, less advantageous for the neighbors and for, for you guys. And that's what they want to, that's what they want to have operate there, so those. So the underground storage tanks were a big topic last time and we've got an expert that's been working on this for a while. It is not uncommon for steel tanks that were installed in the 70s to have corrosion which leads to potential leaks, in this case these tanks did leak and they're, you know, once that was discovered, no more fuel has been in those tanks, so there's, it's not getting any worse. But it does need to be cleaned up and that's kind of what we're trying to do right now. Rohit Shetty with Geological Resources has been working on the underground tank monitoring and is here on the owner's behalf to explain the process for testing, removal, replacement, remediation for the underground storage tanks. I'd like him to present now and then we can either finish our presentation or if you guys want to jump questions, however you want to do it.
Good evening, my name is Rohit Shetty and as Sam was saying, I'm the professional engineer. I've been involved with this particular site since the previous owner had operated. We did some environmental due diligence for them and that's when we discovered that there was a petroleum release and as is mandated by North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, the previous owner was required to report the petroleum release, which, which we did on their behalf. And as soon as the release report was submitted to, I'll just abbreviate, call, call them NCDEQ, as soon as the release report was submitted to them, it automatically triggered a series of assessment, an environmental assessment that we had to do which involved, you know, collecting soil samples, installing monitoring wells to collect groundwater samples. And where we are right now is that the, the contaminant plume has been, has been delineated as in we know the, the aerial extent and how deep it is. And the next phase that's going to be going on probably for another year or two is NCDEQ would like us to continue monitoring, collect groundwater samples just to, you know, account for seasonal fluctuations. So you'll sample once in April, another one would be in September or October just to see that, you know, when the water table rises and, and falls, you know, how does it change the, the stability of the plume, is it migrating or not? So we've been sampling over here for about a year and a half, two years. Plume is stable and so the state might require maybe one or two more rounds of sampling before they will require corrective action, which would be to remediate the soil and groundwater. And that's where I would be more involved. And one of the things which is very interesting is that the, the owner plans to remove the old USD system, the old product piping, the pumps, and which is a great thing because that's the one time when you have the tanks out of the ground, the piping out of the ground, so the contaminated soil is exposed and that's when we can go in with, you know, excavators, dig up the contaminated soil, get it off the property and also pump out any of the contaminated water that comes in. My firm has been involved in a lot of remediation where we also use, you know, chemical oxidants which are naturally, which, which help, you know, promote biodegradation. So it uses the natural microbes which are in the ground to use the contaminant as a food source. So there is no, you know, harmful byproducts, it's just carbon dioxide and water. So what our plan is, one of the plans, everything, of course, the, you know, the remediation plan has to be approved by NCDEQ. And one of our plans is that, you know, when we remove the tanks and we have the contaminated soil removed, we, we come back with clean backfill and then we mix the backfill with, with one of these oxygen source which would, you know, continue to allow the microbial population to, you know, to grow in size so that it feeds on the, on any of the existing contamination. And that's the plan, so it's, it's going to take a few, a few rounds of sampling before, you know, DEQ is going to direct us to, to do that. But one of the things I also wanted to mention is that it's not like they can walk away from the property. You know, once the contamination has been identified as it has been for the site, DEQ will require that, you know, the site has to be cleaned up according to the state's standards. And I'd be more than willing to answer any questions. I guess there was a slide, right? Let me just, oop. Okay, so that's, that's basically if, I don't know if you're able to see that on your screens, but you see the red hashed area, that's the, the current extent of the, the contamination. And there are two tank basins, so the plan is to remove the two, you know, the underground storage tanks, any of the associated product piping and come back in with, with a whole new USD system. And the advantage of that is that, you know, the newer systems have, you know, much more state-of-the-art. They have, you know, spill prevention equipment, containment, some testing. The tanks are required to be double-walled so that, and they're supposed to have interstitial monitoring so that the space between the two walls is constantly monitored. So in case there is a spill, automatically, you know, you find out and it doesn't actually get to the environment because the outer wall contains it. Then you, the, the new requirements are also that the USD systems have to have corrosion protection requirements in place. The operator has to, you know, conduct regular inspections of the, of the underground storage tanks, any of the sumps, anything on, any of the pumps. The new systems are required to have overfill equipment. Usually, you know, when you have your tank drivers, you know, the tankers come up to fill the tanks. Sometimes, you know, if it is unattended, they can, you know, just cause a spill. So the newer systems actually have overfill equipment which prevents the tanker from just continuing to pump if it's not, if the tank is full. And then of course, release detection equipment and testing is, is mandated by EPA and the, the new requirements. So if they go with the new system, I think it's going to be a much, much better scenario, which is what the, you know, the owner is planning to do. But if, if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Okay, thank you very much, do you have a little more information?
Yes, sir, I think we'll just go through it and then questions after. The slide just shows the, the general layout and I think y'all have seen this one a few times, so I'm going to, in the interest of time, this is just a detailed breakdown of the, the parking, the zoning, the setbacks, all the stuff that's required by the UDO and, and anything that we're, you know, there's a couple of things. We're at, we have a little bit more parking than, than the UDO requires, which was a hot topic when we were trying to make the site as good as we can. And then additional tree preservation. Here's our zoning conditions, I'm not going to go through all of them, but whittling them down to, to basically just get us what we're asking for here with the, with the four fuel pumps on the CMX side and the NMX side. Added conditions, try to make things more palatable. We limited the numbers, the stories of the building, the CBD shop, they don't want, they don't want that there anyway. They, they want to be able to sell cigarettes and e-cigarettes in their convenience store, but all the new, it'll be no, no vape shops allowed. Limiting the tobacco. Um, limiting the tobacco advertising because this is, you know, a neighborhood area and just try to cut down on that. The outdoor plaza, I mean, that, that, um, our favorite idea really is to have a mural, um, on the, on that pool drive facing side of that building over by where that, um, community gathering space is. And have, uh, you know, somebody from the high school or a local artist or some idea that, so you know, you know, it'd be nice to tie it in with the park, but if it's not, just tie it in with the town, right? If it's a sunshine or whatever it is, yeah, I don't, we don't have that figured out. Um, but we're committing to doing, doing it and I, I think the planning department's going to have to approve it. So I, I hope that's, that'll get us where we need to go. Okay. So yeah, there's that outdoor seating and there's, uh, there's some glass there right where the outdoor seating is. And then just immediately to the, to the west left of that on the building, you could put that mural. So the building architecture we went through, this is the existing, uh, convenience store. And then just ex- expanding that kind of, the front face needs to be, uh, given a facelift. The, the really blank wall thing that you're looking at is the north elevation of that that backs up to the church. And it's kind of heavily wooded back there. So we didn't put a bunch of, a gla- I mean, there's not existing glass there. And then in the new, we've got some, some glass, but not, not very much. And then for the retail space, um, the east elevation, so that top right corner of that, that's kind of where that community gathering would be. And just to the left of those, that glass would be a nice place to, to, you know, have that masonry be flat so that you can paint a mural on it. Uh, and then the backside of that building, I also want to point out that south elevation towards the west and, uh, and south and pool drive, there, there's a, a good bit of glass and, um, different types of, uh, you know, stone there and brick. So, so that it's not just a, a dead blank wall with, with, um, not a lot to look at. So we, I just want to go through some of the, the changes that we've made to this plan as we've gone through the process. It's been, it's been good and I think we've got a much better project having, uh, first off, realizing we had to go through rezoning. And going, going through rezoning, the neighborhood meetings, I think it's helped us. So with, we, we started with DOT. We eliminated the parking that's on the side of the building now because DOT does, it's a traffic conflict that's an issue. They did tell us at the time we could leave that existing driveway. So we've, we've left that there. We were told to move the driveway, um, pool drive is about a hundred and ten feet to the west is where it got, um, moved. And that, that provides people on pool drive, turning onto pool drive from our site, more distance to queue at the, at the, at the stop sign where, at Pool Drive Neighborsborough. Um, we added the outdoor plaza, the public art, whether it be a mural or, or something else, pedestrian connections and seating along Neighborsborough Road, um, and down to the convenience store. Um, twenty-one percent tree cover, sidewalk along Pool Drive. Um, for our neighbors, we added additional parking, uh, commitment to have a cross-access agreement where people can agree. Nobody's going to tow anybody for pa- for parking across property lines. We added a fountain to the pond, a chain link fence around the rear of that parking lot and into the building to kind of cut down on some, um, cross park, some cross walking, um, you know, it's, uh, we, uh, prohibited the CBD vape shop. Um, so we appreciate everybody's help with this and, and time. And Ms. Kumar would like to s- to add a few quick closing remarks if we have time.
Good evening, Mayor Gupta. Good evening, council members. First and foremost, I would like to thank each and every one of you to taking the time to hear our presentation today. My name is Alicia Kumar. I am representing the applicant at nine hundred Pool Drive. Throughout this process, there have been several concerns raised about how expanding the business might negatively impact our town. I want to address those concerns directly and clarify the intentions behind our request. The applicant, our family, are not outside investors or business owners solely in her, in interested in profit with little regard for the values of this town. We're a multi-generational family who has lived in this community for two decades. The very first small business our family opened was in Garner. Our roots are here and this is the place we call our home. We're not seeking to expand our business for selfish gain. Our goal is to grow in a way that allows us to create a space where our children, along with other families, can gather and thrive. Our children currently attend Garner Public and Local Church preschools. They're involved in activities at the YMCA, at the karate dojo down, just down the street. I personally work as an accountant for the, for a Garner-based accounting company. We're deeply invested in this town and we truly know its value. As parents, we would never put our children or community at risk. We want to ensure that the environment around us remains safe, healthy and conducive to family life. We take that responsibility seriously and this is why the proposed expansion is meant to benefit this area, not harm it. We essentially want to create a space where we're proud to take our children and ensure that they will be in a safe and, um, environment. To conclude, I ask that you keep in mind that our intention is not only to grow our family business, but also contribute to the vitality of the town we love. The expansion is about creating a better, more accessible space for families, just like ours, to enjoy. We hope that council will consider the long-term benefits that this will bring to the entire community. I thank you once again for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. You have some other comments? All done. Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Uh, that's quite the presentation. We've had a lot of information here. Clearly a lot of time and thought has gone into this as you've been through the process and back and forth and, uh, input from the neighbors and the staff. Uh, thanks for the time you spent on this. Now that being said, uh, to, to continue our discussion here, I'd like to recognize our council members. If you might want to ask some questions or make some comments, we'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a good-looking project and, uh, I appreciate the time and effort and you guys are listening to us and the neighbors and having a good cooperation to, to get a nice project and, um, looking forward to it. I just have one request. Tell me you are going to move those two yellow dumpsters to the back somewhere back there. I drive by about ten times a day. So, right there.
Yes.
Just want to make sure. I know it's here, but just, thank you very much. That was my only comment. So.
Okay.
That's all Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Just another driveway which is currently beside the building where they took away the parking. Now, is there going to be no parking signs there? Because I hate to tell you, old habits die hard. And people have been going to that store forever and they're going to park on that side of that store. I don't care what you do. Uh, I'm just being, not being ugly. I'm just saying that's the way it is.
Yeah.
Uh, but now I know that the, I'm, I'm assuming when the other, if this is approved, I'm just making this assumption, the main interest will be more toward the middle. So it'll be a longer walk. So they may park in the front. But it's a quick, you know, it's a quick in and quick out when they park on that side. I'm just telling you, old timers, like if my father can still drive, he can no longer drive. It's where he always parked right there to go in and do the lottery and come out. And I'm just saying, just making a, a thought that you'll still have some of that there. Uh, just a thought, no matter what you try to do, whether you put the sign there or not, people still park there. Uh, my biggest concern with this, the tanks, I understand the tank remediation. I've seen that. I go in convenience stores. I've been doing that for business for years and, uh, so I've seen that process. And this is how, if you get the contaminated soil out, you gotta go, you gotta go down and take it out. So there's, there's no fault there. I remember when the store opened, I was a young boy, dirt road. Y'all have heard all that. The only person that's been in that store longer than I have, or same amount of time is, is the mayor here. Um, my biggest concern is the intersection. Uh, I know this is only adding about five hundred trips a day, but my office is right back here. I know what it's like every day there. That's a tough intersection. Uh, I appreciate the crosswalk that's going to be put in there. I, I think if this, if this gets approved, the towns need to consider asking DOT and we may not get it an approval for some type of crosswalk across Neighborsborough Road. Because people cross that every day, many, many times. I mean, people, you have multifamily that's behind it. So if you want to walk there, we want walkable communities, you gotta have a crosswalk and make it safe. So, I mean, that's just something I'm just kicking out. I see people all the time, but let people go in front of us to walk. It's just, you know, and again, there's multifamily all around this, this location beside the single family. So, uh, that's my biggest concern is that I'm concerned about the, the traffic. The driveway being located further down Pool Drive is a plus. And I'm, I'm, you know, the intersection's the intersection. And, uh, when you have, uh, activities going on, ball fields and, and they all come out of practice, the game leaves, it's interesting sometime. I, I just can tell you from, I go through that intersection multiple times every day, seven days a week. So that's my biggest problem is that.
Thank you. Good observations. Ms. Behringer?
This plan has, uh, has improved consistently, um, looking at places where improvements and changes have been made. I, you know, it doesn't look, uh, a lot like the original plan. It look, it looks better. And I, I have concerns about the intersection too. Uh, and I know that we have to deal with DOT and their numbers and their numbers, their statistics, they're not people. Um, so, uh, as we move for, if we move forward with it, then we need to be mindful that there needs to be something done there. Uh, I don't know what it would be, but we need to keep that in the forefront.
Thank you. Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I agree on the, the traffic and intersection concerns and there probably needs to be some work done on that and some conditions to address that. Um, other question and some concerns I have. So there was a documented petroleum release and documented soil contamination in the sweep, Swift Creek watershed that provides drinking water to our residents. And there was no proactive steps taken to clean that site up. Is that correct?
So the, the release was actually, uh, detected in two thousand, in, in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty.
Four years ago.
Four years ago. So, uh, the way, uh, DEQ works is that, you know, even though the client wants to move forward, they have to go through a process of approval so that, uh, you know, the, the responsible party cannot walk away from their, uh, responsibility. So every scope of work that has been done right from installing the very first groundwater monitoring well and collecting the first sample is directed by DEQ. So once that is done, then we do a receptor survey to find out like, you know, okay, what, who are all the, what are all the water supply wells in the area that could potentially be affected? So every phase of the work, and we've gone through several until where we are now, is where we've installed several monitoring wells to de- define the extent of the plume. And now we're actually looking at, uh, you know, is the plume stable? Is it migrating? So we reached the point where we know that the plume is stable, but it's just that, that's the mechanism that DEQ goes through where we have to, uh, we do assessment. Then we have to do a few rounds of sampling to make sure that we have all the data. And then the, the key thing is that once we install the first round of monitoring wells, we don't know exactly, is the plume moving towards the east or the west? So that's where we collect some more data and then we come back and say, okay, now we have an idea that maybe we need some more monitoring wells, some more assessment to the east of the initial wells, some to the north, some to the west. And that's, that's why this process takes, takes a little bit of time to get a clear picture. Because until we have a clear picture of what the soil and groundwater picture looks like, uh, we won't be able to, you know, have a comprehensive cleanup strategy.
So you mentioned there are several more rounds of this testing that need to occur.
I think we are at a point where, uh, we might need maybe one or two more rounds of sampling.
So there, not a, what you're saying is there's uncertainty as to what this cleanup effort entails.
Uh, not concerned i- in the sense, it's more, uh, to make sure that we have enough data. Uh, and once we have enough data over like, say, two, three years, then, uh, we are ready at that point to say, now we are ready to do the cleanup. And I think we are at that point where we should be, uh, the state is going to issue a directive to start the remediation.
So you're affirming what I said, there's not really an understanding of the full scale of the cleanup effort. You don't have the final numbers yet.
Of what, what is required to clean up?
Right. You don't have that yet.
Uh, no, actually we have a pretty good idea of what we want to.
From DEQ, you have a final assessment of what the soil contamination or remediation process will be in the scope and scale and size. Yes or no?
Yes, yes, we do.
So it's done.
So there are cleanup standards already in place for soil and groundwater. And so, so based on the assessment that's been done so far, we know, okay, groundwater exceeds the standard, soil exceeds the standard. This is the depth of the contamination where, where it is in the soil. This is where the contamination is in groundwater. This is where it's not. And so the, the other slide that I showed earlier where you, you, you know, you had that hashed area, that is the maximum extent of where the plume is. And so that's where the remediation effort is going to be focused on.
So there doesn't need to be any more monitoring or testing because the scope is understood?
Yes, yes. And, and typically what the state does is even when there is corrective action remediation going on, the monitoring is going to, is going to continue.
Okay.
Just to make sure that, you know, nothing runs away.
So the other question I have, um, or concern is there's only twenty-five-year flood retention on this property. It's two thousand feet upstream from hundred-year and five hundred-year flood plain. And downstream, there are at least fifty potentially impacted properties. Our engineer mentioned the downstream impacts were of sign, of concern. Um, and again, this is within the Swift Creek watershed and it's a gas station. There's always runoff of contaminant and some fuel and this is in the watershed. I have concerns about, about that. There are sort of directives in our comprehensive plan around protecting, uh, the environment and particularly around runoff and small infill developments, page one twelve and thirty-six. Initiative number two with the town is flood plain protection in our comprehensive plan. The second priority in our comprehensive plan is flood plain protection and water retention. So I've got the driveway intersection concerns, but also have these contamination and runoff concern, contamination of existing state of the project and then future runoff concerns with what's been proposed, um, at this point. That's all I've got.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Vance, questions, comments?
Uh, yes, I would say thank you for the, uh, the thorough environmental assessment that was provided in reference to geotechnical and understanding the process that we had to go through with, uh, uh, D, with NCDQ. That's a process that's ongoing and we know that and, uh, that is, uh, well thought out. And this is a fifty-year-old building we're looking at here currently. With a steel tank that, uh, typically we understand that USTs are not all, this is not the only location for USTs. USTs and, and the situation you're going through now is something that is familiar with, uh, with, with, uh, with NCD, in, in DEQ. Uh, so it's not something that's new, uh, that we're dealing with and the plume is being contained. We know that it's not, we know that it's not, uh, contaminated current water source. Uh, you showed us where it's, where, where the, where the le- level of contamination is located. The new tanks will be placed in will have a better system of controlling that. You'll, you'll know if they're leaking, uh, so that, uh, you'll be able to, uh, assess things better. Uh, and, uh, the adjustments that are being made with the trash cans being taken out of the, the current location and the improvement of the existing building, which I believe is time for it. Uh, fifty years old, yes. Uh, even I got some leaks in my building, which is physical. Uh, so, uh, so we understand that and, and the conditions that you have considered. Uh, you have considered placing in conditions, taking out conditions, uh, uses that we, uh, discussed in detail and we appreciate that consideration that you went through. And also, uh, you, uh, had on, uh, uh, the, looking at the current zoning conditions that the only thing that really is different is the number of fuel, uh, tanks in the location. So in essence, you could, uh, go forward and make modifications and still, and still do what you're doing and, and w- without our consideration, without, without our consideration. So that is, that is, uh, good and appreciate the, uh, responsiveness that you have with us overall. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Uh, well, that's been a lot of good discussion we've had around here. Uh, we can have some more discussion. I think it might be productive to have a motion and a second on the floor before we spend, uh, more, more discussion or ask more questions. We still have our resources here. Uh, with that in mind, that we can have some more discussion, uh, I'd like to ask, is, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, before, I would like to have some more conversation around the conditions related to the intersection and crosswalk. There was multiple members and if that were going to be included in conversations with the applicant, it might be better to do that before we have a motion on the floor.
Well, uh, it's just a matter of parliamentary procedure. Certainly we can have a motion and a second and then have lots of discussion before any vote. Uh, we, e- either way around, uh, if, if, are there other questions from council would like to get out here?
I have a que- just a question about the concerns on the driveway and the intersection and any conditions that could be included to accommodate those concerns in further review with staff and consultation with DOT potentially. Since it is a busy intersection, it's also a difficult, um, turn there or curve to see.
it's also a difficult turn there or curve to see around.
Well, you know, we've looked at that and talked about it a lot. I don't see DOT allowing any kind of signal there.
Not a signal, but Mr. Singleton brought up the crosswalk concerns and...
I don't, there's places where I don't think it's a great idea to put a crosswalk. There's places in, across busier roads where crosswalks can give people a sense of, as you're crossing the road, those folks are going to stop. And I feel like this is one of those locations where we've got four lanes of traffic, I don't know, a lot of lanes of traffic. I don't think striping a crosswalk in there, I mean, we can do that, we have to, but the, the former DOT employee in me says that, that I'm not sure that we want to encourage a lot of connectivity across that road at that location.
But if they're going to cross regardless, wouldn't you want to make it safe?
I would, yes. I don't think that would make it safer in my opinion.
What if we could ask Ms. Joseph a question on that particular topic? It's not only a question of what's safest, it's also a question of who is best equipped, which landowner, which property owner. There are several property owners right around there. Could you comment at all on the idea of how to safely get across Avisboro Road, and is that the responsibility of this particular project versus the other three quadrants that border on there? How does this fit into the bigger long-range plan? How does DOT feel about this, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, a traffic impact analysis wasn't required for this. I would hesitate to, to comment on if, you know, a crosswalk would be safe across Avisboro Road, considering, you know, your expertise and professionalism. I'm not a traffic engineer. So I would, we would always advocate for the safest and most responsible opportunities if they, if they present themselves, if that can be implemented. But if it's something that doesn't necessarily help the situation, are we achieving our goal that we're setting out to? So, you know, I'm all for doing things that make sense, that will actually make a difference. It isn't NCDOT right of way. So, you know, their input, those traffic engineers would certainly need to weigh in on that. So, I mean, I would yield to say what is safest or what, you know, in this particular situation. But advocating for the town, of course, if there is an opportunity to make something safer, then we should explore that.
Mr. Mayor, don't we have a crosswalk across Timber Drive?
Yes, not at the signal. I was going to bring that up. I mean, right down Avisboro Road, we have a crosswalk where there's six lanes. That's at a signalized intersection. But Timber and Avisboro is crosswalk. But we do have one close to the Greenway where it comes out on the timber. That needs to have different signals. But anyway, yes. So we did do that at Timber Drive.
And my question is...
Do it on Timber Drive. We did one Avisboro Road at the Y. When the Y came up, that was not, not originally done in there. After it, several people in the neighborhood, right across the road, Heather Woods, came in and said, hey, can we do something about a crosswalk? And we got a crosswalk there.
And who put that crosswalk in?
I'd have to ask staff. I am not sure if the staff paid for that or if we made the Y pay, but I can't remember. I can't recall. But anyway, we got one down there.
But doesn't, doesn't it not have to go through a process of analysis in reference to where it's best, best to place a particular crosswalk to ensure that it's, it is a safe crosswalk? It has to go through a process in order to get approved, to go at a location, to ensure that it's going to be a safe location. It's not just put there instead it happens.
Right. There will be discussion. There, you know, it is an NCDOT right of way. So they would be brought into that conversation. You know, being a partner agency, we would talk about that with them as well, and, and see what's the, what's the best method, if they recommend that, and go off with that, those discussions and recommendations. So that's something that, you know, can always be explored further. But to say that, you know, negate what the, what the engineer is saying, and, you know, and we haven't studied that as well. I don't know. Oh, yes, please.
Hey, we got, when we redid New Rand Road, we got a crosswalk added to Cross Highway 70.
Yes.
I thought I'd jump in, just offer what I could.
We had meetings with DOTs about six years ago about the dominant interchange at Timber and 70, if that ever, we see that in our lifetime. And we got them to add crosswalks and sidewalks, and sidewalks along there. They told us, you typically put on Highway 70, and I said, let's go up to South Wounded Street up here, where it's eight lanes, and put them in yourselves. And so, anyway. What gets me is, we talk about walkable communities, but we don't put the crosswalk in. We are talking out of both sides of our mouth. I mean, this is like, we're going around with Shays' Notail, round and round and round. Make it walkable, make it safe. And that's what these people are trying to do. But just J-walk across the road. And people walk across it all the time. I mean, I'm just trying to make it at one designated place. I'm just trying to make it safer because I see it. But you can't sit here and encourage walkable communities, and then we'll just say, hell, cross anywhere y'all want to cross. Just go for it.
Okay, can I ask you another thing?
J-walk Central, we won't give you a ticket.
Bear with me, man.
We won't give you a ticket. J-walk Central.
Bear with me.
I know that we can get into deeper conversations about complete streets and looking at how you interconnectivity of pedestrian activities and things of that nature. And plus, in all of that, all of that, even with, with what I'm hearing here, it's imperative in my mind that we go through an analysis to make sure that it's going to be safe. And it goes through the process with DOT, because they are, we are working in partnership with them. It is a, is it not a DOT road?
It is.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that perspective. And I see we have our engineer, Ms. Harrison over here. Have you got some input on this concept?
Sure. I think, I don't think it's a bad place to have a crosswalk. There's certainly a reason to have it there. I don't think we would recommend having a crosswalk without having a signal. Not necessarily a vehicular signal, but at least a pedestrian signal in that location. We had approached DOT previously about a traffic signal being warranted there. It was not at the time, but we could certainly, as staff, take on approaching DOT about the ability to put a pedestrian crossing somewhere in that area, and have them start taking a look at that with us.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. It is a complex issue. Nobody believes in safety more than the council. Nobody believes in safety of that area more than I do. My grandkids live two blocks away. They go to that store. They want to go over to Avisboro Coffee and Avisboro Restaurant, but they better not be crossing that road now on foot, you know. So, yeah, it's a very important issue, just like at the Y. The Y came without it. It was added later. We're not sure who did it, was it DOT, the town, some combination. It may be beyond the scope of this particular developer to embark on that journey. It's going to be a community effort of all the property owners, all the taxpayers, all the staff. But it's very, very important to maintain safety. It's hard to keep the kids from going across. It's hard to keep the chicken from crossing the road. But we need to make it safe for everybody over there. Okay. Other observations or comments? I think it might be time for a motion. See if we can get a motion and a second, then we'll see if we need to have some more discussion.
May I make the motion? I move that the Town Council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requested with the adopted land use plans detailed in section three of the staff report as our own. And I further move that the Town Council adopt ordinance number 2025-5302 approving rezoning CZM MP 2306 as request is reasonable and in public interest because the proposed district is conditioned to be compatible with present zoning and conforming uses of, on nearby property and with the character of the neighborhood and the available sewer, water, transportation, infrastructure, stormwater facilities, and other necessary infrastructure are suitable and adequate for the proposed uses.
Second, we have a motion by Mr. Vance, a second by Mr. Behringer. Is there any further discussion about topics we haven't addressed?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm going to vote no without the 100-year flood containment in the watershed, and without a voluntary contribution on behalf of the applicant to, for future expensive acrosswalk, when they're increasing the square footage by four or five times and encouraging foot traffic. I don't see that as a reasonable contribution to the community.
Okay. Any other discussion? Let's take a voice, let's take a roll call vote on this, if we may. And I think I'll start with Mr. Vance, who made the motion. Aye or nay on this topic?
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
No.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Okay. It sounds like a three to two vote. The motion passes to approve that ordinance and the rezoning that goes with it. So that concludes the session on that one today. And here it is after eight o'clock, and I've been told repeatedly that every two hours we have a break. Take 10, please be back in here at 8:27. And we'll proceed. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. A lot of work has gone into it. Uh, we're very fortunate to have our Assistant Planning Director Erin Joseph to give us a presentation here and gather some other information. Full speed ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, this is CZ twenty-two dash zero, uh, seven, and it is a tier-one, uh, rezoning request. So it does not have a site-specific, uh, plan. Um, the applicant, Ronnie Thompson, has applied on behalf of the property owners. And, um, they are requesting eighty-two rezone approximately eighty-two point two-nine acres from light industrial conditional neighborhood mixed use, um, residential two, residential four, conditional and LI conditional. So the site does encompass six parcels along West Garner, uh, Road. Um, and the zoning conditions have been proposed. Um, they restrict the range of light industrial permissible uses. Uh, they've reduced it to a list of twenty-one out of a possible forty-one. And they have also, uh, proffered conditions that address site design and architectural standards. So again, the site is split between multiple zoning districts. Um, it's also currently, uh, in the commercial highway overlay. Um, there are vacant use, uh, vacant, um, lots that encompasses this, uh, development request. And also you do have, um, some commercial uses that front along Garner Road. And there was not a traffic impact analysis that was required for this site. Um, however, NCDO two does report in, uh, September of, uh, twenty-twenty-three, um, that the, uh, average annual daily traffic counts are, um, at thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one. And so then this is, um, you've reviewed this case before, so unless you would like me to go through all of the conditions, I'll focus in on the updated conditions since the public hearing, uh, which is listed here, um, on this slide in brown. Um, the, it's condition three, that landscape buffers adjacent to residential uses. All lots adjacent to existing residential zoning districts and uses shall have a minimum of a fifty-five-foot type-D perimeter buffer and the requi- of the requirement for large evergreen shrubs. Uh, within the perimeter buffer shall be augmented in quantity so that they are installed at a minimum of four feet in height and space so that they may grow together to be maintained as a screening hedge. Condition five, um, they've just updated the area described as undevelopable area. And this condition here, number six, uh, truly speaks to the architectural, uh, standards and the attempt to, um, have a cohesive development, um, commitments. Um, and so they are, um, committing to, uh, buildings that are primary buildings less than thirty thousand square feet in area. Um, they will not have vinyl siding. Um, there shall be a maximum of two masonry product colors used throughout the development. Um, buildings may use one or both colors. Um, excluding masonry, there, um, shall be a maximum of three facade colors used throughout, throughout the development. Uh, buildings may use one, two, or three colors. All uses within the development shall use similar light poles and light fixtures for street and parking lot lighting. All site lighting for parking and private internal drives shall be installed on round black poles. Um, if wayfinding signs are used in the development, they shall use similar poles and sign design. At least seventy-five percent of added landscaping shall be native and adaptive species. Um, and the next architectural uniformity conditions, uh, applies to primary buildings that are thirty thousand square feet, um, or greater in area. These building, uh, materials shall consist of concrete wall panels and glass. Exterior walls will be precast and/or site cast poured in place, uh, concrete wall panels. Uh, the concrete panels will feature decorative horizontal reveals. Um, front building panel design will include architectural features to break up the plane, um, and ensuring no section exceeds fifty feet in width. The main building entrance shall be accentuated with a canopy or similar feature covering, uh, the front doors or doors. They also are committing to windows and doors, um, that will achieve a minimum of twenty percent transparency threshold on the ground plane and street-fronting facade at office areas entrance location. Uh, the glazing will incorporate storefront, uh, systems utilizing, utilizing insulated, thermally improved tinted, non-mirrored, uh, glazing and clear anodized aluminum or painted finish. Uh, the architectural composite, uh, metal panels shall be incorporated into the glazing system to enhance, uh, the design and articulation of the openings. Uh, the ACM shall also be used as an accent, accent material. Uh, the paint finish and color shall be textured finish, uh, with at least three colors. Uh, horizontal gradient, gradient paint color bands will be used to break up vertical height. Accent colors, if used, will be limited to accent bands and must harmonize with the overall building design. Um, and the following architectural commitment shall apply to buildings within one hundred feet of Garner Road. Um, and those buildings will, uh, all front facade building entrances and building entrances facing Garner Road shall either be covered by awnings, colonnades, or canopies with a minimum area of five by five or undercover walkways. All front facades and all facades facing Garner Road shall have at least fifty-five percent brickstone or decorative score concrete masonry. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held, um, in December of twenty-twenty-three. You have that information in your report. And, uh, staff evaluated this request with the comprehensive land use plan. Uh, there were four growth framework criteria that were evaluated. Um, one was modestly consistent, um, one modestly inconsistent, and two split ratings. The site encompasses the neighborhood and retail character typology, what doesn't, which does not support the light industrial zoning district. However, significant acreage of the site is supportive of light industrial zoning and is aligned with existing industrial uses nearby. The land use and community character consistency, um, there were nine criteria that were determined to be applicable or possible to meaningfully address. Um, the request did receive an extra credit. Uh, the site is near the core of Garner where development will minimize expensive infrastructure expansion, um, investments, and avoid the loss of rural areas for future development beyond municipal limits. Um, so there is one strong consistent, um, five modestly consistent, one modestly inconsistent, and, uh, one strongly inconsistent that was due to no written condition indicating any commitment to, uh, green stormwater infrastructure. Uh, after the public hearing, the applicant submitted additional conditions that I just went over, um, that are addressing the architectural uniformity and open space, uh, the sensitivity to surrounding, uh, residential areas. And so with those commitments, consequently, the consistency has shifted in a supportive direction, and staff can now support a finding of consistency for this request. Uh, the planning commission reviewed the case and, uh, reviewed it against the, uh, comprehensive land use plan. Um, some of the comments and questions, um, involve stormwater control ponds. Um, there was appreciation shown for the buffers and attention to the wetlands. Um, there was a question referencing, um, a question that was posed at the neighborhood meeting, uh, pertaining to the compatibility with adjacent, uh, uses. Um, que- questions regarding sidewalks, vacant business parks, and how potential, um, vacancies on the site would impact the area, um, in the site. Um, that, a question about the installation of a traffic signal. Um, clarifying question about the five acres of open space across the north boundary, uh, border, and that why is it not evenly distributed? Um, there was a question regarding what was considered active in open space. Um, so ultimately, uh, the planning commission adopted a consistency, uh, statement, and they moved to recommend approval, um, with a unanimous vote. You have the six criteria to evaluate, uh, this case against for reasonableness this evening. Um, I won't go through all of those, uh, have those. Um, and then you also have a draft motions, um, upon your deliberation of this request, and you can find that on page one-seventy-five. Applicant has prepared a presentation. I will be right here, um, to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Yes, Egerd, here's the presentation.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poe at three-one Fayetteville Street. Uh, here on behalf of the applicant, I do have an applicant representative here. I have Ronnie Thompson, uh, for Thompson Business Park. I'm also have Beth Blackman and Keith Roberts of Timmons, uh, Group here to answer any technical questions that you may have. Uh, so this is the Thompson Business Park, um, and I, I won't go through all the property details, which Erin did a great job summarizing, uh, but it's a good-sized site, and the comprehensive plan kind of aligns with what's there today as opposed to what we're proposing for the future. Uh, but we think there's good reason for some modifications that I'll explain. This case, as you may recall, is, is somewhat of an academic exercise to get to the rezoning point, uh, that we're at today. Um, part one outlined in red is already zoned light industrial. Um, it went through several UDO changes to get to that designation. Uh, it has a lot of entitlement that we're actually reducing with this case. So, um, i- in a lot of ways, actually, in several meaningful ways, we're actually downzoning part one in order to allow us to have a more cohesive project that incorporates part one and part two. Um, so we had brought part two in, and we had to kind of combine both and bring the whole package together for one clean zoning for the town. Um, but what's really at stake here and the expansion of the light industrial district is shown on this slide. So, um, what necessitated bringing part one back into it is that we realized you could have a lot more environmentally friendly development of part two if you accessed it from part one. So that required us to rezone part one. And so the area with the red arrows going to the green boxes is one of the two areas where we're asking for additional entitlement. Uh, the other area where there will be additional entitlement would be on the frontage along Garner Road, that upper left-hand corner outlined in green. So that's really what's at stake when you consider an expansion of a zoning district. However, that light industrial district to the south is actually getting reduced in scale and permitted uses, and also adding buffers and, and better protection. So we think overall presents a better package than what exists today. When we came to council for the public hearing, we had specific tasks that we needed to address. And so the council echoed some of the comments that we heard from the neighbors that spoke at the meeting. So, uh, the two requests that stood out from, um, neighbors and council members is we need to work on that list of permitted uses. There are too many permitted uses, some of them may not be compatible with the surrounding area. Please reduce those. Now, the original list was really just what was already permitted, permitted on the, uh, southern section. We just carried this forward, but we took a hard look at it. Um, what we also did is for the neighbors that spoke out at that public hearing, we met with them directly over Zoom and walked through the permitted uses, walked through what would be prohibited, what would be permitted. And I won't speak for them, but it's my understanding that we, we gained their comfort with the project as we went through that, because we did make a lot of cuts. Um, we also clarified the buffers that apply to the project. So there was an existing buffering requirement. We were adjacent to residential, um, homes, uh, and that was really a, a screening hedge of sorts that would go in the buffer. But there are questions about minimum dimensions and how those would apply, uh, and they're varying in different locations. And so what we did is we set a minimum fifty-five-foot dimension, uh, along any adjacent single-family residential properties. And then within that, working with staff and Mr. Treisenberg and Ms. Joseph, uh, suggested the language, we just made it crystal clear how that buffer would work, that the additional, that wall of plantings that we were putting in there was on top of what the code would require for buffering. Just to make it absolutely clear, it's an enhanced planning standard, so you're getting an extra row of hedges to provide better buffering. So we, we bolstered that buffer in a number of ways, dimensionally and planting-wise, to make it clear to address those concerns. Um, some of the other changes, we, we clarified a few details in the project to some fine tuning with staff. Um, but the big kind of staff comment on the project is there was no architectural cohesiveness, no conditions to ensure high-quality building development. So we looked at a bunch of similar projects throughout the town, looked at the standard that had been set for industrial development and matched that with this project. Um, we have, you know, a number of conditions that remained the entire time, from lighting, uh, restrictions to benefit our neighbors. It wasn't in the original zoning, but it's something we started with in this project, a fifteen percent tree coverage requirement. And then we also had this five acres of open space, which I'll explain why we wanted to clarify that. It's our way of saying that we think that our project provides a less impactful development in the area we're expanding to the north. Um, so again, I think, Ms. Behringer, you commented on the permitted uses, as did other council members, and we really did reduce those. Ultimately, what this project is envisioned to be, it's, it's being developed by local business owners, and they view this as an opportunity to have similar kind of local business types, uh, across the street from your, your local plumbers, electricians, and folks like that to operate in kind of a, uh, flex office-type environment. So, um, we wanted to clarify those types of uses here. That's how we envision this to lay out. This slide depicts the various open space buffer and, uh, tree conservation requirements that we have. And so there are a couple of shades of green here, where you see on the very bottom of the slide, as well as the upper left-hand corner, that depicts that minimum fifty-five-foot buffer where we're next to the single-family homes, as well as that screening hedge is meant to show kind of that dark line that'll be effective to provide a barrier. The darkest of the greens on the slide is the tree coverage area. So as we said, fifteen percent of the site is expected to be tree coverage. That also should help you visualize why we thought it would be better to That also should help you visualize why we thought it would be better to access part two from part one. We don't want to cross over some of those stream areas and have more environmental impacts. It's just less impactful to go through part one. But when we asked for that expansion, we wanted to make it clear that we're really not affecting neighbors, especially to the northeast in the upper right-hand corner. And so that was that five-acre, the language we're using now, I believe, is undeveloped area. We had an open space before, but open space would have required some sort of activation and, you know, maybe putting trails or things back there. And we thought it was more appropriate just to leave it as is and untouched, to provide just a big, thick buffer back there. It will likely be, I think, if it meets the town's requirements, all just tree coverage. And so we want to leave that as is, and we just want to depict in this slide why we had that five-acre commitment so that we could be crystal clear to the, really, the neighbors that are impacted by this new addition, that it's not much of an impact to them. And then these next couple of slides just go through the architectural commitments, and Ms. Joseph did a good job of going through those. Again, we have different commitments based on building size, and then some added layers of commitments where we're closest to Garner Road to provide good, you know, uniformity and attractive streetscape. So with that, I believe we addressed all the feedback we received. We're excited about this project, but certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Excellent. Thank you very much for the information. This will be a good time to ask council members if they have questions for either our staff or applicant. Let's start with Mr. Matthews.
No questions this time.
Mr. Singleton?
Not right now.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger?
To clarify the question of the southern buffer, and it's, so the, and I've seen there's been some activities out there recently, and I've been by there in a few days. Are any of those large trees in that buffer on that southern part? Are they in that fifty-five-foot? Again, buffer, but again, that means you can take anything down. Are any of those trees identified as being kept? Or is it the plan to go kind of to the property line and then replant?
I'm gonna have Keith correct me if I'm wrong, but so there's been some clearing work because part one was already entitled, going through the subdivision process. They actually marked at sixty-five feet from the property line not to cross over. So if you're on the site and you're seeing gaps between sixty-five feet and the neighboring properties, it's because there wasn't vegetation there in the first place. And so it perhaps looks worse than it will in the future when we go in the site plans and can then add in our additional planting. So the protection that was marked is actually beyond the fifty-five feet. So it, yeah, I think it's just a consequence of less dense plantings.
Yeah, it's just, my question is, is the plan to clear everything in that buffer and replant, or are there going to be some of those really large oak trees that remain?
Believe, I think the, yeah, undisturbed. Yeah, so again, that sixty-five-foot marker will remain. If we have a site plan that goes to that fifty-five feet, we wouldn't be going in to disturb it.
So condition three is fifty-five foot. It doesn't say anything about undisturbed, though. So that's sort of my question. What's going to happen in the buffer? Is it going to be cleared to the property line, which is your, that's what you can do, and you can replant and do the screening? But I'm hearing calls from the audience that it's undisturbed, but I don't see a disturb written here.
I'm being told that perimeter buffers are required to be undisturbed.
So that would, okay. So those, some of those trees fall in that or may not, but they're still required to do the screening?
Yeah, the tree protection fence will be placed ten feet further out to try to protect all the trees that are within that fifty-five feet, so the T P F will actually be at sixty-five feet.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you. That's all.
No questions.
Okay. All right. Well, that's a lot of information, great presentation. We've looked at this a number of times. There's been a lot of interaction with staff, I believe, through this, changes even since last time I was here before the council. And it looked like it got marks from the planning commission as well. So at this point, we can have some more discussion, but I would say let's get a motion on the floor in a second, and then we'll see if we need to have some more discussion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of a zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in section three of the staff report as are on. And I follow the move that the town council adopt ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five five three zero three approving rezoning C Z dash two-two dash zero seven as the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the subject property would be more suitable for the uses permitted by a proposed district within the versus the current districts.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vance. There's a motion and a second. Is there some other discussion from council? Okay. Well, let's do a roll call vote again, or let's start with the one who made the motion. If you're in favor of this, please signify by aye. If you're opposed, by nay. Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Well, it's unanimous. That passes, and that concludes our discussion on that particular topic. Good luck, guys. We're eager to see another great, great part down there. We know you all do a great job. Okay, moving right along, item number three on the new and old business is a tier-one conditional rezoning C Z twenty-four dash zero zero five, known as Garner Industrial Six. And we're fortunate to have our assistant planning director, Aaron Joseph, do our main presentation here, and then we probably will hear from the applicant as well.
Last case, but not least, we have Garner Six, case number C Z twenty-four dash zero zero five, Garner Industrial Six. So the applicant, Taylor Hollingshead, has submitted this request on behalf of the property owner for a tier-one conditional district rezoning, requesting to rezone thirty-three point six-two acres from rural agricultural to light industrial conditional. The site is located at forty-five twenty Guy Road. It's within our extraterritorial jurisdiction. Zoning conditions are proposed that restrict the range of ally permissible uses to a list of three. I'm actually reduced it by one since the last time you've seen it, out of a possible forty-one. And they have also profit conditions that address architectural and site design. Again, tier one does not have a site-specific master plan. And so briefly go through the zoning. Rural agricultural is a district that typically accommodates rural residential, agricultural, and civilcultural uses, typically found outside of the town's corporate limits, where water and sewer may not be readily available. Currently, the site is vacant, and much of the area is comprised of rural land with some single-family residential nearby, but there are also commercial and industrial and utility uses in close proximity to the site. Guy Road is a state-maintained, two-lane major collector road that serves as a connector within this local area. And N C D O T reports the last traffic count for this portion of Guy Road just south of U S seventy highway east at eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven A A D T trips in two thousand and twenty-three. And they have narrowed their uses down to three out of forty-one. And I'll just address the conditions that have been offered since the planning, excuse me, the public hearing. They have added a condition that addresses landscape open space and to provide breakout area and communal open space for employees. The front building setback based on individual building gross floor area. So for buildings with a gross floor area of less than one hundred thousand square feet, they will meet a setback of seventy-five feet. For buildings with a gross floor area between one hundred thousand and two hundred thousand square feet, the setback must exceed one hundred feet. And for buildings with a gross floor area greater than two hundred thousand square feet, the setback must exceed one hundred fifty feet. And so those were the updates since the planning commission and the public hearing. The future build-out lane configuration stemming from their traffic impact analysis, they are proposing a fifty-foot right turn lane, dedicated turn lane into the site, as well as two access points. There is a hundred and twenty-five-foot left turn dedicated, left turn lane into the site, and also the second dedicated right turn lane into the site. There were two neighborhood meetings, although one was required stemming from the public hearing. The applicant met with adjacent property owners just to help clarify some of the questions and concerns that they had during the public hearing. And so you do have that information in your packet. There were five growth framework criteria that were evaluated, four strongly consistent and one modestly inconsistent. And the transportation choice received a modest non-support just because it's a pre-existing condition. And so it did not result in the lowest rating that could be given by staff. There were twelve criteria for the land use and community character consistency that were evaluated. One was strongly consistent, five modestly consistent, four were split, and the modestly inconsistent was that it was not a clear that the project promotes increased development density over overall mix of uses. And there was no written condition indicating a commitment to green stormwater, so that it received a strongly inconsistency in that rating category. However, with the added commitment to a gathering space for employees and a shift in the character rating to neutral consistency due to the planning commission's review, staff now supports an overall finding of consistency. There are questions that stemmed from the planning commission about jurisdictional boundaries, what was previously located at the site, clarification regarding the capacity of the stormwater pond, storm retention capabilities, if sidewalks would be provided, would there be consideration to provide benches for employees? There was some appreciation given of providing an idea of what may be developed at the site. There was a clarification regarding the height of the building and the setbacks and road improvements, the question surrounding the existing zoning districts, and whether Guy Road was a town road, and were there any town roadway improvements proposed? That was some of the questions. So ultimately, the planning commission adopted a consistency statement that this is consistent with the town's adopted land use plans, and they did make a motion to recommend approval with the condition that, a condition be added addressing the minimum building setback as one hundred and seventy feet, give or take. And so with that, the motion passed unanimously. Again, consider the reasonableness of this case based upon the six criteria, and you have your draft motions for consideration and deliberation. The applicant is here, and I can pull up your presentation, and I will also be available for questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Joseph. And yes, we're always eager to hear from our applicant here in the developer. If you would introduce yourself, name, and address in full speed ahead.
Yes, sir. My name is Justin Parker, forty-five oh nine Creedmoor Road, Raleigh, two seven six one two, and I'm the market leader for the developer of the project. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, town council members and staff. Aaron, thank you for the great presentation. Thrilled to be here with you this evening to discuss our next industrial project in Garner. Before we do that, though, I wanted to provide a quick and exciting company update for you. So the last time, and when you've seen us in the past, the name of our company was Al Nire. Two weeks ago, we rolled out a name and brand change for the company, changed the name from Al Nire to Maris. And the reason that we embarked on this name change is really the name Al Nire reflected the past for us. For many, many decades, we were a family-owned company owned by the Nire family, and the reality is that is not who we are anymore. We are a one-hundred-percent employee-owned company with offices in the Midwest and the Southeast, and we wanted a name and brand that reflected that employee-owned nature of our company. I wanted to just share that exciting update with you to avoid any confusion in the past, present, and future. But make no mistake, other than the name and the brand, absolutely nothing has changed about the company. Same people, same leadership, same execution in the markets. As a reminder, we are headquartered in Cincinnati, Ohio, have been in business since eighteen ninety-four. We opened our office in the Triangle in two thousand and nineteen. I was employee number one for us here in the market, opened the office, and have led the growth of the team. Since two thousand and nineteen, we have grown from one employee to fourteen employees, many of whom are with me this evening because this project is very important to us. We've developed industrial projects as far east as Smithfield to as far west as Greensboro, but it all started here in Garner for us. This was our first project in the market, Garner Business Park seventy on Highway seventy. This was a public-private partnership with the town of Garner to bring sewer to unlock this project and other development on one seventy. The result of that partnership, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand square feet of industrial space that today is one-hundred-percent leased, has created significant job growth, has sparked over eighty-five million dollars in investment, and annually generates five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in property tax revenue for the town of Garner. That's not the Wake County portion. That is the portion that goes to the town of Garner. That five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in property tax revenue from these five buildings is over two times the cost for the town to service those buildings. I share those, I share those data points with you because we anticipate our next project, Garner Building Six, to provide similar economic development benefits for the town. In addition to the economic development benefits, there are some public infrastructure improvements that will be occurring with this project. Most importantly, and really leveraging that initial investment in our shared public-private partnership, we're now bringing sewer, the same sewer extension that came up to the original project and was brought down seventy, we're going to take that from U S seventy and Guy Road and bring it down to our project, again, really leveraging the value of that original public-private partnership. And we will be making roadway improvements on Guy Road. Aaron did a great job of articulating some of those, but we will, we will be widening Guy Road in front of our project for what's planned as a future three-lane road for Guy Road. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my teammate and lead architect on the project, Pat Moore, to talk about some specifics of the project.
Good evening. My name is Pat Moore, Vice President of Architecture with A and Architects. We are the architect within Maris. We are soon to change our name to Maris Architects, waiting for that paperwork. But we, I'm at three oh two West Third Street in Cincinnati, Ohio, where we're based. We're very excited about this project. We hope to continue the success that we had in the Garner Business Park, and really, we're planning on replicating the formula that works really well. It is one of our premium prototypes that we feel meets all the market on our building blocks with dock doors, parking, clear heights, entrances. It hits all the mark, and it also meets Garner's stringent requirements for the architectural This next slide. While we recognize- While we recognize that it's not required for a Tier One, we wanted full transparency. We had a few meetings with, with the neighborhood, and we had several public meetings, and we wanted to make sure that it was very transparent what our intent was for this site. And so we submitted architectural elevations and building site plans, and actually engineered site plans so we could have more transparency about what our intent was. As we met with the neighborhood, we did get a lot of feedback, which we applied, but the bulk of the feedback was really addressed in the technical side of things. They, they would probably categorize them in as traffic, landscaping, site, detention, all these aspects, lighting, all these aspects will be addressed as we submit plans for permit. If, as you see in what Ms. Joseph walked through, is we had a couple of meetings last year, April 29th, and another one we had in November 12th. So we wanted to walk through exactly what our intent was for this building, so we wanted to make sure that the neighborhood got a clean look at what our intentions were. Some of the upgrades we made, we're going to meet the minimum 15% of the site for the preserved tree cover area. However, our overall site is about 40% preserved. We're not going to touch 40% of the site. We are a sustainable company, and we want to, we want to walk the talk. And so we are incorporating some of our sustainability strategies, and that is one of them, just is to make sure that we think about preservation and that we input it into the developments that we do. We recognize that there are neighbors nearby. There's two south residents in the south. We know that there's neighborhoods to the southwest down the street. We're responsible developers. We want to be a good neighbor, of course, and we definitely want to be respectful to the communities in which we develop, which we have in our Garner Business Park, and we want to be respectful for the town of Garner, of course. Continuing on, a minimum 75% of the landscaping will be native and adaptive species. We tend to push on our sustainability side, we try to push that a little higher. You know, you want to plant plants that are regional, they thrive, and so that we're going to push that even beyond the 75%. Pedestrian sidewalks will be provided a long guide row in addition to the road widening and the tapering and the turn lanes. Right now, those will just end the south and end at the north, but we know that the long-range plan, and we've heard some discussions about sidewalk and pedestrian-friendly streets, we're doing our part by adding that along the front of the, our property, and those will interconnect to the front entrances as well. Landscape open spaces and the communal areas, it's really just amenity spaces. Recognizing occupant health and well-being is one of the sustainability strategies that we'd like to incorporate, and providing people outdoor spaces is important. So that was one of the, it was actually aligned with the requirements as well. We are going to look at enhancing the landscape at the south property where we have the two residences. We have to coordinate that with the existing wetlands, but we found, we think there's a pocket, we've talked to those neighbors, we tried to work something, we haven't got that, but we have some commitment to do some enhanced landscaping to improve the sightlines to the building. Which leads to the next one, which is the exterior building height. While it's a maximum 50 feet, when we came here before, we had a 36-foot clear, which yielded a 48-foot tall building. We've since dropped everything four feet. We heard the neighbor say, "It's just so big, can you, can you lower it?" And so, well, we can look at lowering it, and they were saying, they were interested in making the building smaller and shorter. So 32-foot clear, that'll yield a 44-foot tall wall along the front, and then we'll pop it up two feet at the entrance, and I'll show you in just a little bit. Again, this is a Tier One, and we're, we're trying to be as transparent as we can about what our intentions are from the building design. We did list out, Ms. Joseph walked through the tiered setbacks, so I think that was a commitment from the planning commission, they wanted to know what are setbacks. So we went through that pretty well, and we're over 170 feet setback from the right-of-way, and then there's even more between the right-of-way and the actual pavement. So we feel good about that, and we've adjusted. Our conceptual building elevations, again, a Tier One, but we, this is what we're, we're replicating what we felt like is a good formula, a good design that attracts good tenants and is very favorable to the community in which it's built. We're, we're breaking the building into pods, basically. We're managing the, the texture, the color, and the proportions and the scale by tiering the base middle cap. And you'll see that in our business park, you'll see it in the requirements of the UDO, paint stripes, base middle cap, lighten it as it goes up, and in between each paint colors, we like to put a reveal that's formed into the panel, add shadow line, add visual interest. And then we enhance the corners where our offices are by popping up the windows. We have full-height curtain wall, more glass, we're meeting the 20% at our office area, which was an improvement we, from our last time. We're putting brick form liner to add texture at the, at the high-touch points where, at the building entrances, and then we're adding clear-story windows along the perimeter. As you can see, we're, are breaking up the facade, making sure that we don't have any uninterrupted flat spaces. We're stepping the panels heights, we're lapping the panels, all to create visual interest and minimize the size of it. And so we've lowered it four feet, we're managing it visually with those design strategies. This is a rendering, this is similar to what we did at Building One, and you can see just adding some of those features, how it breaks the mass down, and makes the curb appeal and the aesthetics a better fit for this site. With that, we hope you will consider the zone change, and we're here to answer any of those questions.
Thank you. Excellent presentation, a lot of information. Yeah, we've seen this, you've worked hard with staff, been a lot of adjustments, you've really reached out to bring information to the council outside of these meetings. The same stuff, sometimes it helps us to hear it seven times in a row. So thank you. With that being said, I'll ask council members for questions of either staff or the applicant. I'll start with Mr. Vance down here.
I don't have any questions at this stage.
Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a staff question or an applicant question. You know, typically, we do our, the setback changes on height and not building size. And I guess my question is, what was the rationale? And then that to, I guess, staff, and then to you guys, like, does it make sense? Can you build what you want with these setbacks? Because it seems to be incentivizing smaller buildings when it, like, it seems that, I'm not really understanding the rationale for the setbacks being related to the square footage of a building. It's like you're disincentivizing square footage by making setbacks.
I guess it's inherent in the size, it wouldn't be tall. I think that was some of the reasoning, that the bigger footprints, the larger buildings are going to be taller inherently, and then the smaller buildings, smaller scale, that was the reasoning. I think we're at a little over 170 feet setback for our building that we're showing, and I think planning commission was just wanting something to tell us, you know, some requirement to get to the setbacks, but I understand.
Fifty feet is 50 feet, no matter if the building's 100,000 square feet or 200,000 square feet. So my question is, are you getting as much buildable space as you need? If you had to do 100, 200 square feet, would it be better if you had a 100-foot setback and build a larger building? I guess that's my question. I'm just looking at me a little crazy.
I would say this.
I'm just kind of like, it seems like you're being disincentivized from doing a larger square footage, and if you, like, why would we have the setbacks increase with the size of the building, you know, decrease the size of the building that you're building?
Yeah. There's definitely a, a school of thought in the planner's approach to site design that would exactly agree with that. I think honestly where this came from was really a response to the neighbors in trying to address just the, the impact of the volume of the building. For them, it seemed to make, I think, more sense that if the, the setback was increased, then you could have more, but they just didn't want the big.
There's another part of that that's, that's probably more of a, a marketing standpoint. We would never design, develop, or build a building like that deeper than 325 feet. An industrial building block is typically 310 to 325 deep for a single loaded docks on one side. Anything deeper than that, you're, it's, it's, it's out of market, and it's really a dinosaur. It's hard to sell, it's hard to develop and get a tenant that wants to service the other side of that building with the dock. So that's when you would go to double-loaded docks on both sides. So we're at that level, we wouldn't want to go any deeper, if that helps.
I just wonder, I guess, are you comfortable with this? You can build what you want, or would you want to build something bigger? And could you build something bigger? I want you to build something big.
I will say, I appreciate that sentiment. I will say that we do have, in the, in the rear of the site, we're trying to, we'd be respectful of the, the existing vegetation and the preservation. I feel like, yes, we would want to be bigger, but really would, we wouldn't go any deeper than we are showing because that, for a single-loaded building, that's just out of market otherwise.
If y'all are comfortable with it, y'all are fine, I'm just trying to give you some more space to, like, build, but okay, that's my only question.
Okay. See other questions, comments?
What would be the hours of operation of the warehouse? Like, you know, 12 hours a day, 14 hours a day, 18 hours a day, 24 hours a day?
So this is speculative, we don't have a tenant in mind. I, I don't know what the zoning requirements are, but it's not determined. I mean, it's, we want to promote as much flexibility as we can within the guidelines of the, of the UDO zoning.
Okay, I'm just looking, expected trip generation is 940, just looking at that. Just, I was just trying to base on how many hours you're going to be open. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, observations from staff?
I was just going to say that the ordinance doesn't require hours of operation, but that's something that could be a zoning condition, but just as the applicant stated, it's speculative. So that wasn't something that was discussed as a proper condition.
But all, most of their traffic would be going straight to 70, right? Yeah.
Got you. And there may be another item that wants to be presented over here. Mr. Trezenberg, Ms. Jones?
I was just verifying whether or not they would be subject to a special use permit, and they are within our current ordinance language, so they would not require based on the size of the building.
So all that to say that what we're looking at here is probably a pretty good picture of what we would expect, is also subject to the usual setbacks, screening, traffic, et cetera. So even though this is a Tier One, you've given us a pretty good detail of what you expect to go there. Based on the past history that your firm has had in building similar properties very close by, all of which it turned out to be high-quality, high-tax revenue, good employment centers, and good neighbors. So your, your work precedes you, your good work follows you around. Thanks for having been here and giving us the information you get. Any other observations or questions before we ask for a motion? That being the case, I would say, is there a motion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requested with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 3 of the staff report as their own. I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2025-5304, approving rezoning CZ 24-005 as the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the subject property would be more suitable for the uses permitted by the proposed district versus the current districts.
Motion made by Mr. Matthews. Second, second by Mr. Vance. That being said, let's go three in a row with a roll call vote.
Just a brief discussion, I will, I will vote against it because of the traffic impact. It's noted, most traffic go to, go to 70. I was a vendor at that store at the corner for over 20 years. I know what the traffic's like there in the morning and the afternoon. Sometime in the morning, it's backed up past, to their site or further back. And any improvements made down there will be improving on their side of the road, that's fine and put in a turn lane, but the, that intersection is, is tough. And until there are significant improvements made on 70, that intersection, we're just making it worse.
Yeah, you, you've seen that first.
I've seen it with my eyes for 20 years, I've seen it get worse because there's so many neighborhoods down the road and off the roads down that way, a lot of residential traffic, and the way they get out is to get out to 70, they go to wherever they go, whether it's east or west. So that intersection is a challenge, and this is going to get more challenging.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. I appreciate your concern for the neighbors and the traffic, that's certainly an issue as, as we go. That being said, there is a motion, there is room for more discussion and more observations.
Mr. Mayor, I have concerns about the traffic as well. I, I travel down there frequently, and it, Guy Road is very narrow, and there's just a lot of traffic coming in and out, and it concerns me a lot about the safety of the folks that are traveling further on down. A lot of them are going down to Amelia Church Road and on down to 42, and it's, it's just borders-on-dangerous sometimes.
It, it is that. Yeah, and so this is the part where we do have more discussion, more observations. We'll take, any observations? I usually look at Mr. Vance as my transportation master, given his background and involvement in Campo.
I would say that the TIA was done, was it not? The TIA recommended what for improvements along that intersection of not, was it Guy Road and US 70? Okay.
Excuse me, what, what, what are we doing here?
About the, 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 the transportation impact analysis was complete, I just wanted to know the improvements that have been, that were recommended by the analysis, which will compensate for the, for the, for the project.
Okay. Don't believe we're having a public hearing here tonight, we hit several opportunities. Is this part of the applicant's? Okay, thank you, thank you. I wasn't sure who you were. Please introduce yourself with name and address.
Taylor Hollingshead.
And one second, the reason I asked it because we're asking technical questions, which we, I believe, require a technical response to.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure who we were and what we were doing.
All good. Taylor Hollingshead, 807 Cupola Drive, Raleigh, North Carolina. So yeah, as part of this project, due to the trip gen, TIA was submitted to both, or to DOT, it was routed through Town of Garner as well. DOT required that, based on the trip count, that, I mean, Garner's future land use, or not future land use plan, but the comprehensive transportation plan requires that Guy Road is widened to three lanes. On top of that, because of our traffic, DOT asked for the decel lanes and the left-turn lane into the site. So that is a, you know, DOT requirement, and those are the guidelines that we have to follow.
Okay, so compensation has been made for the, for the project itself based upon the TIA?
Correct, and the plans have actually already been submitted to DOT and are currently under review, so we'll be getting their feedback, and Town of Garner will also be reviewing those plans, so.
And the current, well, this may be off the, the current traffic that's happening is not because of this, of this project, it's because of, who knows, whatever development or growth or traffic rerouting is happening.
Yep, I think as other properties are developed along this corridor, we'll eventually see improvements, as I'm sure you guys are aware, as things kind of happen in pieces, and then eventually the town or the state can come in as part of like a STIP plan and finish building out that section. So I would echo any concerns to DOT and, you know, see if there's room for them to kind of step in and help with future improvements of the entire corridor.
Would you like to translate that or restate that for us, Mr. Vance?
Well, the way I understand it is that the current, the current concerns that have been brought forth by the council are that, that are evident by other projects that may be contributing to the increased traffic on that particular corridor, and that as the, and as the projects come in, that the, the role will be reassessed, possibly another TIA, which will, DOT will direct further improvements to be made to hopefully better the flow of the, of the traffic.
That, that may have a cumulative effect from various properties that actually might give some relief to traffic flow in that area.
It might, it might give some relief.
Yeah, it seems to me it's the, the age-old question of the chicken or the egg, you know, are the taxpayers of Garner, for example, going to go out and spend quite a bit of their hard-earned money ahead of a project in case a project comes, and, and put in infrastructure, whether it's roads, stormwater control, water sewer, or do we depend on our development? And, and put in infrastructure, whether it's roads, storm water control, water sewer, or do we depend on our development partners who kind of do their part as they go? And, uh, that, that relieves the taxpayers. Does it give us an instant solution? Sometimes not. Sometimes it's a little bit piecemeal. People talk about sidewalks to nowhere, but hey, the guys that were building were willing to put sidewalks. We'll, we'll require the same of the next guy. The guys who are building this are building turn lanes. Will the next one be required to do the same? Yes. Will it look a little patchwork at first? Yes. Does it save the taxpayers from reaching in their pockets and paying increased tax? It does. We, we found these, these kinds of businesses, uh, like the ones that you have, are great contributors to, to the revenue of the town. You pay in way more than it costs to maintain you. That does go toward building reserves for the town or other entities to expand infrastructure of various kinds. You mentioned the public private partnership to get water and sewer out that way. Another example, it is, it's a piece by piece, part by part. I wish we had a magic wand. I wish we had a billion dollars, uh, but, but we have to do it as we get it there. Growth can be painful, uh, but I think we're doing it in a responsible manner here. That's just my, my two cents. Other conversations, other, other observations?
Summation is there'll be 940 trips added mainly to that intersection and make an intersection that's probably a level D even worse. So anyway, I'll talk about the infrastructure. We all might be dead and gone when it gets gone, but I'm just stating it'll add more traffic to an intersection. I have watched with my own eyes the cars back up to their property.
Yep.
Just telling you. That's, that's important, my studies you do or T I's you do, the eye test shows the car sitting there. They do keep the turn, the signals, the signalization there does go a long time. So you can sometimes empty all that traffic out, but in the evening it's really challenging. In the morning, I'm sorry, it's more challenging leaving than coming in. The A M exiting onto Guy Road is more challenging than in the P M when they come back because, because they got a traffic free flow where they can flow in. Don't stop at the signal.
This is an important consequence of growth and we have somebody who's familiar with traffic. I, I wouldn't mind hearing another comment from you as we have this discussion.
I would just say as part of the T I A, they do look up at the intersection as highway 70 and would determine if there's signal improvements required. And as part of D O T study, who is ultimately in charge of this road and what is done and forced upon people developing in this corridor, there was no improvements, um, requested by, for, uh, merits to make as part of this development. I will say the property just to the north of this, uh, is currently under construction and they also had to widen their section. So piece by piece, there is some, maybe some hope that, you know, that whole corridor will eventually be developed. I think their commitment to bring water and sewer further down Guy Road enhance, or kind of entices other developers maybe to come and, and purchase land and kind of continue to grow this corridor, which ultimately requires them to complete their road winding and add more pieces to the puzzle. So it may take some time, but I think ultimately it's going in the right direction.
It's a challenge. In the long run, it'll all work out. Have another observation?
Yeah, just a couple, um, of quick thoughts here. So 70 and Guy Road are both state maintained roads, right? So our collective sphere of influence on those is limited. I think Mr. Mayor, you made an important observation that it is incumbent upon us as the development communities, we come in and take on these projects, to positively influence the things that we can do. Grant can fix the, the intersection at 70, but what I can do is contribute to the widening of Guy Road, which there will be an upstream and a downstream effect of traffic mitigation, right? As Guy Road is widened, we are doing that as Taylor mentioned, the developer to the north, Mr. Bannister, when he delivered his building, he, he widened Guy Road to that third lane. We will be doing the same. We will be doing, we will be making all improvements that were warranted by the T I A. I would tell you, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm a developer. These T I As tend to, tend to portray your very worst case scenario. These are, these are designed to be light industrial buildings. Okay? We do not, they are speculative as we mentioned. I do not know yet who's going to go there. They are not designed to be ultra heavy distribution facilities. They are designed to be light industrial buildings. If you go by our business park in 70, they will behave very similar, similarly to that project, which does not have traffic queuing. It is a very normalized traffic pattern between the employees and the trucks daily. And that's what we expect to happen here at this project.
Thank you. Lots of good input. Complex questions, complex answers. We've got a motion and a second, uh, before us. If there's no other discussion, other questions, I'll ask for, uh, voice vote, roll call vote. And we'll start with the gentleman who made the motion.
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
No.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Okay, sounds like four, four to one, a majority votes, uh, aye to, to approve this rezoning of this project. Thank you very much for all the information. We're looking forward to a thoughtful, uh, well thought out development down there. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Moving right along, we, one of my favorite parts, committee reports. And we can ask our council members who are on particular committees if they'd like to give us a report. We'll come back around for council reports of a more general, um, manner after this. And we'll start with Mr. Vance down here. He looks like he's eager to share.
Without speaking, uh, and I don't have any committee reports this evening.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger? Ms. Behringer, committee?
I do have one and I'm excited about it. The arts committee is just begun, excuse, excuse me, the artist has just begun production on our third, uh, utility shroud. And that will be, uh, probably a month before we see it, but it will be at Garner Rec Park. And not Garner Rec Park, I'm sorry, Garner Recreational Center. The creation of the sculpture to go at the corner of Avi Street and Garner Road is in process. And later this month, we will begin discussions about requests for proposals for a mural on the side of the Pearl Street Building.
Wow. It seemed like only a year ago you said it'll never happen. And here you are doing it. Fantastic. Thank, thank you and your committee for their work. This, this is great stuff. Mr. Singleton, committee?
Can I ask Ms. Behringer, which, uh, corner will the art at Avi Street and Garner Road go on? Which corner will it be?
It will be on the northwest corner.
The G pack corner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
In that nice park-like area that's right there.
Right.
Looking good, looking good. Mr. Matthews?
None.
Okay. Well, let's move right along to manager reports. We've got some good stuff coming here. I'll call Ms. Miller to kick this off.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. We have several of our quarterly reports to share with you this evening. I'll ask each of our staff members to, uh, provide you some highlights for each one of the reports for this evening. And of course, we're available to answer any questions that council will have. So first up is our talk of the town report and I'll ask our assistant manager, Mr. Hodges, if he'll review that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Council members, uh, keep in mind that the talk of the town was produced for our January 21st meeting. So some of the items in there have maybe a bit dated. We did provide some details about the Jürgen Park construction starting. So if you have not had a chance to take a look at that, um, detailed update, please do. But construction has started there. I know a couple of council members have reached out and asked questions about, um, things that they have had questions from residents about. So if there's anything we can answer about the, the activity there, uh, please let us know. You will see a, a project sign go up in the near future so that it will better delineate to the, the public, uh, what is happening at that site. Groundhog Day celebration has already passed because of the date and the mayor's already updated on that. There is still time to sign up for the Jazz at G pack that is this Friday night. So that is included in your report if you're interested. A reminder that the council's planning retreat dates are February 20th and 21st. And then there's also a link to the Wake Transit Plan, uh, for an opportunity to provide input on the transit plan. The report also includes the Garner Info monthly analytics and you can see those in your report. There are also some annual summaries, uh, in the, there as well. So if you have any questions about that, uh, please let us know. The, the departments that are responding to most of those reports are, are Public Works Department at 53%, our inspections department at 28, and our police department at 14%. And we also have planning and, um, engineering and other departments participating in following up on all the many things that get logged in our Garner Info app. Also in the report is a, a heat map or a map with, with colors showing you the intensities of where most of our calls are reported from in the Garner Info app. If you have any questions about the monthly or the annual analytics, please let us know.
Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Hodges. If there aren't any questions for the talk of the town report, we'll move down to the next report this evening, our development services update. And Mr. Hodges is also going to provide this, uh, review.
Okay, thank you again. So last quarter, we started, uh, the, our quarterly development services update. We've made a, uh, an attempt to give you an update on each of the departments that works together for development services. So our economic development department has included an update on the launch program. This is our fourth cohort of launches, our entrepreneurship training program that we conduct with community partners and Wake Tech. And we have a class going on now. They meet here each Thursday night and that'll go through the end of March when there'll be a graduation. And Mr. Grover will be making sure that all the council is included in invitation to graduation the last week of March. Inspections has included some updates on building codes. State law, uh, 2457, um, that was passed in December, did change the start date for some building code rules. That really doesn't mean a lot to the council per se, but to our development community. It means that both our staff and our developers are having to continue juggling a, a moving schedule of when new rules are going to take place. So please just be aware that in addition to all the other things that our staff is keeping tabs on, we're trying to react to the changes that are, that the legislature is making that impacts the daily work that our folks are out doing in the community. The plan, there's some planning staff updates, um, and I'm sure some of these folks will be introduced to you more formally in the future. Uh, but, but several additions to, um, to planning staff, especially the development review team. Joe Linsky, who has been with us for, uh, some time, has been promoted to planner two. Nick Tofelsky has come on board as the development review manager to lead that group. Also Cassidy Charles has been hired recently as planner one. And a couple, couple of months ago, we, um, uh, brought on Randy Hoag, who joins us as a planning technician. So with those in place, we now have a fully staffed development review team. And that's the side of the planning department is reviewing site plans and all the day to day, shorter term planning work. So you can see photos of those folks in their bios, uh, in your report. We also have the quarterly development statistics. We continue on a very rapid pace of, of, uh, development. 669 total permits issued for the quarter. One, I mean, 11,266 total inspections completed, uh, 428 fire inspections conducted. And then C O's, uh, issued, um, were 356 and that's just for last quarter. So there's some additional information in your report. If you have any questions about any of those statistics, please let us know.
Wow, wow, a lot of stuff.
So thank you, Mr. Hodges. Next on our report is our quarterly capital report and I'll ask our, uh, town engineer, Ms. Harrison, and she'll provide a brief overview.
Good evening. The report should be in your packet. I'm just going to go through some highlights of things going on with projects and then of course answer any questions that you might have. The Aversburg Road and Garner Road sidewalk project, um, you got an update on acquisition for that last week. That is complete. So that project is planned to go out to bid in March, so early next month. We're hoping to have that out to bid and get rolling on that one. We have the White Oak Roundabout project. We currently still have utility relocation ongoing on site. Fred Smith Company is the main prime contractor that will be doing that work and they will be on site in early March and anticipate completing that project in November. Let's see. We are nearing the end of the six month drying period at Meadow, at Meadowbrook Park. If you recall, after that dam was breached, there's a required six month waiting period to see what environmental features develop. That will end on March 13th, so that will give us the opportunity to start considering what the next steps are at Meadowbrook Park. The South Garner Greenway extension, because that project more recently received lap funding or will receive lap funding, it is currently under review with N C D O T. We anticipate those comments coming back in March and then we'll progress to right of way plans and start discussing, um, acquisition with those property owners. As Mr. Hodges mentioned, we have started construction on Jürgen Park, um, and have basically just started site work at this point, some clearing and grading. As you probably recall, the guaranteed maximum price was awarded in December. And this project is planned to be ongoing until the summer or fall of 2026. The town hall annex is under construction, as you have probably seen coming in and out. The projected, uh, date to complete that is still May 24th, 2025. We have run into a couple of things as you do in construction projects that have required us to, um, make some changes, but we're still hopeful that, that completion date is accurate. And then just a couple of notes on the N C, N C D O T projects that are currently happening in Garner. We have, of course, the bridge at 50 and 70 under construction. And then, um, the one change to the dates in the projects that are in planning and design is N C 50 at Timber. Those intersection improvements will be let this month. They were previously to be let in November and that has been pushed to February. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The 50 and Timber, they're just going to go 50, 50 on the, uh, north side of Timber and they can just make that one lane to turn lane that will go into the Rand Street, uh, Rand, New Rand Road Extension, correct?
Correct.
Hey, just one lane instead of have, got to kind of cut in, cut out.
Right, so there's.
Smooth lane.
There's currently on the south side of Timber, there's a turn lane. And so that's where that lane ends. So it will basically continue across until you get, um, up to the Red Road intersection.
Okay. The White Deer Park improvements, the, the bids went out for the splash pad and the park, I mean, excuse me, the playground was delayed and it says a winter 25, possible bid winter 2025. They'll know there was some hiccups with that. So is that still proceeding or is there still some hiccups with that? The playground at, at White Deer Park?
That is still proceeding. This is the most up to date expectation is that we're expecting to, to bid that this winter. So that'll be later this year.
All right, thank you.
A lot going on.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. And the final report for this evening is our quarterly financial report. I'll ask our finance director, Mr. Beck, if he will provide some highlights of our financial report.
Good evening again. I'll make just a few, uh, general comments about the report and I'm glad to answer any questions, uh, if you had a chance to review it in your packet. Overall revenues and expenditures, uh, look really good to this point, uh, in the fiscal year. They're tracking with our budget projections, uh, for the most part pretty closely. I did want to point out particularly sales tax. So we have, um, received an unexpected bump in sales tax revenue compared to a lot of our peers in Wake County and across the state. There are other communities that are, um, a little bit nervous at this point in the fiscal year with their sales tax revenues because they, you know, we've seen tremendous growth year over year the past few years. It had, it had started to slow down a little bit, but it's, it's kind of returned to the historical year over year growth rates for most communities around the state now, which is depending on where you are, anywhere from like two to 5%. We budgeted fairly conservatively for sales tax. But here in Wake County, uh, the county has some control over how sales tax revenue, uh, is distributed to the municipalities within Wake County. So counties have two options for that distribution. It can either be per capita or ad valorem tax base. And Wake County chooses per capita as the distribution method, which, uh, is advantageous to the municipalities overall. They update their, uh, population numbers with information from the state demographer's office each September. And when they did the update this, this past September, uh, for September sales tax, um, Garner saw a larger increase in population than our neighbors did. And so, uh, I'm not exactly sure how the state demographer's office gathers their information on population. But we, because of that revenue or the, uh, population growth we had, we've got a larger share of that revenue coming our way this, uh, fiscal year than some of our, our neighbors did. So our neighbors are, are seeing, you know, year over year growth in that four to 5% range and we're at 9%. So that was a little bit unexpected for us. We were, we were expecting to return back to that four to 5% growth rate. Uh, I don't have any way really to know if that. I don't have any way really to know if that's going to continue into the next fiscal year. So, you know, we plan to still be conservative with our estimates. It may just be a one-year blip that we saw such a larger increase in population, but I did want to point that out. That has been a nice bump for the town so far this year.
So thank you, Mr. Beck. Council, are there any questions regarding the Quarterly Financial Report?
Sounds like good news to me.
Yes, yes. So thank you for listening to all our reports this evening. Just one quick reminder that our electronics recycling event is scheduled for this Saturday, the eighth of February. It's being held at our Public Works Complex at 610 Rand Mill Road, and it's from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There's information on our website about materials that will be accepted at the recycling event, but just wanted to share that reminder with the council and the community. So those are all our reports and updates for the managers' reports this evening. Happy to answer any additional questions the council may have.
Any other questions for our town manager? Okay. And I believe that takes us to Attorney Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased to introduce formally to you Kayla Black, who is our first spring legal intern with the Town of Garner. She started on January 7th and will be with us through the month of April. She's a graduate of UNC Asheville and is a current third-year student at Campbell Law School, and she is a Garner resident. So we are happy to have her here and joining the legal team.
Excellent, excellent. Very exciting.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. It's been a great experience so far.
And you're just getting started good.
Yes.
Excellent, glad to have you aboard. Thank you, Ms. Jones. That brings us back to council reports. Anything that wasn't covered in the committee reports, Mr. Matthews?
Just one thing. This happened about a year ago. At Lake Benson Park, if someone else drove by, that bridge, that yellow-orange barrier stuff is ragged, falling into pieces. Can we get that either taken down or replaced? It's right there at the bridge, orange, what do you call it?
Construction fencing?
Yeah, yeah, that kind of stuff.
We can take a look at that and see.
Yeah, it's just all to pieces. And appreciate that. That was all, Mr. Mayor.
I've had a couple residents ask me the last week, when the projected opening date of the VA hospital is, and I couldn't remember if it was the fall of this year, the spring of next year, and I may be off on that.
It's actually targeted for spring of 2025. So I don't know that we have an exact date, but right now it's still spring.
Right, we don't have an exact date. Our inspections team has been working with the contractors to turn, to issue them a temporary certificate of occupancy so that their other vendors can go in and start doing their customized work. So that was done late last year. So we're continuing to work with them on their fire suppression systems and so forth. As soon as we have a more firm date, we'll provide that in an update.
Okay, but projected is about spring of '25?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Behringer?
Just one item. I have been really happy to see some white circles spray painted around some manhole covers on Garner Road, which makes me think they're going to be raised and fixed, and the drive won't be so bumpy.
Wow, amazing. Mr. Delling?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Vance?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Well, that concludes our council reports. I think we have a little work to do, maybe in a closed session. And if someone can give us the right citation and the right language, we'll think about moving to a closed session.
May I move that we move to a closed session pursuant of NC General Statute, Section 143-318.11A5 to instruct staff on negotiating the acquisition of real property at the material terms of a proposed employment contract.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Vance, second by Mr. Singleton, to move to a closed session. All are favorably signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. We'll move to a closed session. We'll be back later. Thanks to all of you for coming and your attention and your input.
We'll be back about 11 o'clock if y'all.
Okay, and we return to the open session and reconvene here. Could I get a summary of what was done in the closed session from our county attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council met in closed session with staff to instruct staff on negotiating the acquisition of real property and the material terms of a proposed employment contract. Council provided direction, but no official votes or action were taken.
Excellent. Are there any other questions or comments from council? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Same move.
Moved by Ms. Behringer and seconded by Mr. Singleton. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. It's unanimous. We stand adjourned. Thank you for another productive meeting.